We learned all kinds of things down there.
Mr. Chairman, we are live.
Okay, welcome, everybody. Today is December 12th. This is our weekly county commissioner meeting. This time I please ask everyone to rise, say the pledge. Pat, would you mind leading us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, where the nation undergoes and is with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Pat, for leading that. Everybody have a chance to look at the agenda? Yes, sir. Would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve agenda.
Second.
Who did second it, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll go right on down our agenda. Our first item is an action item. These are claims bordered, claims to junior college. And I had a few questions, Gabby. The first one was the propane at Mill Street.
That was my.
Is that, was that our propane? Or did we fill it and then leave?
I'll have Doug look that up. I don't know. Questioned that address on there, too. Financials, Doug, where you could look.
Hmm, or we just forgot to notify Ed Staub that we've canceled that.
Gabby.
Mr. Chairman, which payment?
It's Staub and Son's Petroleum under County Agent. Department. It's a 300 Mill Street, U of I extension, 57615. I'm just wondering if we should be asking for that back.
Do you want me to move that candle in?
That's.
Does it smell?
I thought it was burning, but it's not. Or if that was filled a month ago and we just got the bill.
For 57615?
Yep. It's 106946.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we need to call about that one. It appears that that is for a November bill date.
And we were out of there.
We were out of there. So, yes, Mr. Chairman, we need to.
Okay, so we're going to hold. We'll hold that one. Then my next question is, under the dynamic business G I S, we had a monthly consulting fee, but it says see attached image for work performed. And I never could find that. Do you know, Gabby, is that still?
Sure on that one either.
It's nothing I'm against any of it. I just want to see how that breaks down.
Sure.
So if you could maybe dig that out. I've asked Rita for it a couple of times.
Okay.
You guys feel free to step in with your questions anywhere.
Mr. Chairman, I have that. You want the detail of what was provided?
Yeah, if you could shoot that.
Mr. Chairman, it's hard for us to, I mean, you're over here while you're talking.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me pull this down a little bit.
I do have one, one comment on cellular, under cellular. I do not have a cell phone, so you might.
Is that under commissioners?
Yes, well, it's under Verizon Wireless.
Interesting.
The bill said Commissioner Bingman. And so I took the liberty to assume it was Commissioner Allen instead. But it probably should have just been still Dave.
Should be in his department, yeah.
I can reclassify that to be Dave's.
And we have three junior college.
That's correct.
If there's no more questions, I would entertain a motion to pay the claims support orders and three junior college and hold the one payment to Ed Staub.
So moved.
Who did second it? Who did second it, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Oh, boy. Oh, here's the steps for the. Lot of money for steps. Gee many Christmas.
And skirting. And does the waterways management team still meeting? We had talked about going after some of those funds to make sure everybody had paid their share. And I don't know who that was tasked to or who we were trying to follow up with.
Doug was going to tell us.
No to follow up on that.
Is that it? You just see those? All right, thanks, Gabby. We'll move right on down our next agenda item, our election elected officials report. So we'll go with June first. Oh, Sue, come on up.
One question, Sue, before you get started.
Yes.
I noticed on this that this was put on here as a cancellation of solid waste fee. And one of these is a solid waste fee, the other one is not.
I know.
Do we have an issue with that on our agenda item? No.
One's a value and one's a?
It was the same thing last week, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
As long as Doug's fine with it, I'm. This one's a value cancellation. The other one is this is a fee cancellation.
So we need to expand that heading next time. Solid waste and value cancellation. I think we're okay to go ahead.
Okay. Cancellation number 16 for 2022. Property owner name is Winter is Coming. Parcel number RP 00176001002B. This is, Christie said, there's an error in the land value that was presented on the V O E paperwork in June. She had presented a land value of $87,424 instead of the $99,871, which is what we have in pro val. But when the values were certified, for some reason, the new land value of 87,424 did not get certified. The property owner called, they caught it. And so she has prepared this and is asking for a $12,447 value cancellation on the land.
Mm hmm. Okay. Everybody good with that?
I'm good. I'm making motion to approve that cancellation, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Who did second it to cancel solid waste or value cancellation on number 16? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Okay, we'll go.
They need to change their name, the winter is here.
Right.
It's hard.
Winter's coming.
All right, next one is cancellation 17. This is a solid waste fee cancellation for Jefferson Bohan. Parcel number RP 000490000240. All improvements were removed prior to 2020. And this parcel should no longer be assessed a solid waste fee. So we are only asking that it just be canceled for the 22.
Sue, I just had a question. Does a road considered an improvement into a lot? A road or? So it's got to be an actual physical structure.
Or utilities.
If there's an RV hookup, there would be a solid waste.
Okay. Because I think we're going to probably see some more of these in camping lots, so.
Well, this one was, it just, when they removed all of the improvements, the solid waste fee did not get removed.
It was just like a shed they removed or?
Um, you know what? I'm not sure. Actually, I am sure. It was a $9700 value back in 19, so some sort of outbuilding. So anyway, they got.
The concern is that there was an old manufactured home that got removed, but there are still services there.
Well, they can have services. But if it's an RV hookup, then we'll pick up the RV hookup and that'll be considered an improvement.
Okay. So this one then doesn't have.
Correct.
I have another gentleman asking about that.
Yeah, I've had people calling me, too, about if I take everything off.
And here in a month or so, I think I probably need to revisit our solid waste fee ordinance on what we put them on and probably put a little bit more wording in there.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea because, like I said, I think we're going to see a lot more of these.
It'll just, yeah, I think it just needs a little more fine tuning, a little more clarification. So we'll adopt a new one when you guys are ready.
So I would entertain a motion one way or the other on 17.
I move to accept the assessor's request for cancellation of solid waste fees 16 and 17.
Oh, sorry.
Who did second it, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. You guys have to help yourself to the candy.
Both of them. The old and I are both bad today.
Take it all.
No, Ed, you have to gain 10 pounds before you leave.
Take it all.
Did they tell you that when you did that?
Be sensitive to my, be sensitive to my health. And your blood pressure has to go up about 10.7.
My hand out, we're not keep your hand out. Hold each other accountable.
Anything else?
Yep, that's it.
Okay, I guess we'll go to Mr. Miller.
Commissioners, good morning.
Morning, Doug.
I'll just go right into my action item that is on the agenda for today. And that's Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation Annual Snowmobile Fund and County Vessel Fund Reporting and Remittance Form. This is one of the year end audits that we have to complete as specifically for Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation. Commissioners, I have provided you with the spreadsheets that were filled out at the request of IDPR. And I will stand and answer any questions. I will let the commissioners know that Recreation Director Larry Laxton has had the opportunity to review. Also, John Hicks, who's a member of, I can't remember which recreation board he's a member of, but he also had an opportunity review. I did also send this out to the Waterways Committee and worked with Sergeant Kevin Turner about the additional money or the leftover money that we have in waterways to be expended in the upcoming years.
I'd have one question on the waterways, the vessel fund. There was a late fee on there to a WEX bank. That's WEX bank. What do they use a bank for and why do we pay late fees?
Yeah, there's a lot of information here.
Commissioner Moppen, do you have when that expenditure was met?
Yeah, it was, it was a minute ago. It was. And this report is on. That's my note, I should have stayed on. On page five of the report, 11, 8, 21, there was quite a few payments to a WEX bank. I don't, I just don't know that I've seen that bank name before.
Give me one second, let me see. Unless the sheriff has it right on the.
I think it's a fuel card.
I'm sensitive to late fees. I'm not going to be on.
Is it West One Bank?
W E X.
W E X, sorry. I don't think we use this card any longer. It is a gas card for the Shell Station. And I think Sheriff Boland, after this late fee was incurred, made the decision no longer to use this charge account. And that is the last expense on that matter. But I believe that this WEX bank account has been closed out. But I would like to confirm that with the sheriff.
It has been closed out for a year.
Okay. Now, we're just approving last year's stuff. So just wanted to make sure our process didn't incur late fees. Thank you.
So Doug, when do we usually get this, this money? Was it in the, for this time of year, end of the season, end of the budget? When do we get this $600,000?
So we have, that's our ending balance right now. That's what we have in remaining cash for the waterways.
Does it come in once a year or every quarter?
We get paid waterways once a year for registrations.
Correct me if I'm wrong. It seems like we've committed quite a bit of that, have we not?
For next year, for, that is correct. Working with Sergeant Turner, we have identified the $604,000 of remaining cash that is planned to be expended in the upcoming years. And we did provide an itemized breakout of how those dollars are to be expended.
Right.
Kevin, is there anything you want to add? Nope, you're good. Um, seems like, correct me if I'm wrong, Doug, but not too many years back, this was about $400,000 a year. So this, this fund has gone up quite a bit.
It has.
And that's all tied into the registration, the boat registration?
Correct.
Gee many Christmas.
We, we addressed that a little bit earlier. It seems to me like maybe two to three months back. And then the waterways did make some, I guess, suggestions for some expenditures they need on that, which I think is going to bring that down considerably in the coming budget.
So is it, do you know, Doug, is it kind of like cars where the county gets a certain amount of that registration?
Mm hmm. That is correct for our area. We, and then during this reporting period, we received $141,649.
So, Mr. Chairman, that state allows people with vessels to invest in any county they want to.
Okay.
Their vessels. So Valley County happens to be getting a pretty good consideration for that.
Yeah, that's amazing how much that's going up. Any more questions for Doug? If not, I entertain a motion to approve both of them, or one at a time.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, we disapprove both of them.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Is there anything else, Doug?
Commissioners, just real briefly, we have one more year end financial report that we're almost completed. I'll be working with the road department tomorrow to finalize that. So if the commissioners are inclined to have that on the agenda for the 19th, we will be ready for that presentation on the 19th for the financial or the yearly financial audit for the road department. Court, we, our jury trial was actually settled. So we don't have our two week civil trial, which is nice. But we do have court, two courtrooms today. And with that said, commissioners, that's all I have.
So I'm Doug on the road department report. Is that when we do the blue line, too?
No.
This is just all financial?
Correct. This is all revenue expenditures for fiscal year 2022.
Okay.
I also, this is a breakdown, though, of what you're going to spend.
It does.
Right.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. When we want down prosecutor, I guess, Brian Missrokey.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's district court day, so Brian is distracted with work down in the courtroom and sends his well wishes for everybody. Couple of updates for the board. We're going to welcome an intern into our office for next semester. Arnold Hamar is a third year lawsuit with the U of I who's going to join our office for, for the semester. It's an unpaid internship, but we're happy to have him aboard. And hopefully, he can pick up and work independently and be a, be a help to the office. I expect he will be. So we're excited to give that a try and see how that, how that will work out with, with an intern. We're getting settled in at the office. I think most, most everybody has swung by and taken the tour or had, had a meeting there. And we certainly welcome that and encourage people that if they have the opportunity to come down, certainly do. I have not been able to get office hours set up here yet until I can get a laptop from, from I T. But that's in the pipeline. And so I do want to spend some, spend a day or two here in the office during the week, too, just to make the ease of access just a little bit easier.
Brian, is that going to be in June's old office?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. I'm working on a couple of projects, bigger, bigger projects that I kind of set aside for quieter times. So I'll be meeting later this afternoon with Pat with H R to look at the employee handbook and go over some of those policies. And, and that's, that's a pretty big project. So we may be reviewing that for some time and coming back to you with some suggested edits for the, for the handbook to make sure that that says exactly what you wanted to say. And it is on point with, with the expectations of conduct in the office and in the workplace. I, on the civil side, still continue to get lots of, lots of questions about various things. I've got some year end contracts that I'm reviewing. And but for the most part, pretty routine stuff that keep coming in fairly routinely. But that's not any reason to not call if you have a question or an issue. I'm always happy to reshuffle the deck and reprioritize if need be and, and help resolve any concerns or questions you might have on the legal side. The criminal, criminal side of the office is, is, I would say it's, it's a little slower than expected, but still they, they stay busy with, with the work that they do. It can be hit or miss, but when it's, when it's busy, it's busy. So it's nice to have a little bit of a consistent flow through, through the office that way. So I guess that's it unless you have questions, questions for me about any burning issue. We do have a workshop scheduled a little later on roads. And I look forward to that conversation with, with Jeff when he's here and can participate. Okay, thank you.
Nope, I think that's it.
I think I put the M O U with the Fair Board on the agenda, too, Brian. So it's going to be that, too.
Okay, we'll move down our list. Sheriff. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. First on my list is an amendment or modification on our cooperative agreement with the Forest Service for 2023. And that's for $4,000 additional. I have billed them for the previous year and have not received it, that money to date. But this 4,000 is, is just a portion of the 2023 budget. This is all they can plan for at this time, after the first of the year.
So I don't think we got any of that.
Yeah.
You didn't get this packet?
We didn't, we didn't get the other thing you have on here either, the pharmacy services and all that stuff. So this cooperative law enforcement, is this, is that different than last year?
No, it's the same contract. It's just that the monies are split out a little bit. They said they could only spend 4,000 from October through December. But it doesn't go into effect until after it's been signed by everyone. But they just got it out to me.
Is this the one we normally get 20,000 on?
Yes, and it shows on here that they, that they still have a carryover 20,000. And this is an additional four. And I have billed them because the dates, they didn't get the, the Forest Service agrees they were wrong in not getting the contract to us last year until, and from, it's supposed to be in, in October. They didn't get it to us till April. We had already worked on the forest. And I wasn't happy that we weren't going to get paid for those hours that we had put in. They says, don't worry, it's still, it's still there. We're going to get it to you. I billed them, haven't received any funds.
But technically, we're, we're going to get 24 then instead of 20?
Yes, across this year.
Okay.
So I thought that this went in the packet.
I'm looking for it, Sheriff, and I can't find it anywhere.
Did it not come out when I was out of town and it got approved through legal? And then I believe Captain asked that it be put on the schedule, but he may not have known the process that he needed to.
My sheriffs are not finding it.
Because I don't even have Oki or Doug's signature on the page that should have come over. Do you have that, Doug?
Yeah, Sheriff, I apologize. It looks like I received it on this, on the 7th. It doesn't look like it went through. I don't have the final version, at least the.
The cover page?
The cover page from, from Oki.
I looked this morning, I didn't see it in there either. But I know that. The cover sheet from, for this agreement. The captain was supposed to, I saw that you said it was approved or Kathleen said it was approved. And so I got ahold of the captain while I was out of town and asked him to get it on the agenda. So we'll get that cover sheet before the end of the day for you.
Okay.
Do you want to look at this? It's basically just saying we're getting it.
Fungus, it's the same and we're just adding 4,000. I have no problem with this one, so.
No, I don't have a problem with this one, but I would like to look at the pharmacy ones.
I would, too.
Yes, we have those.
Okay, so we need a motion then to approve the cooperative law enforcement agreement with USDA and the Forest Service, Paying National Forest.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second that.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The modification just needs your signature, mine, and.
Learned a ton at a meeting last Thursday and Friday. And we're never supposed to say so moved. We've already done it all morning.
Oh, that was good.
We'll have to go over a few of the things that we learned.
That's it?
We're not supposed to do that because it's not clear.
So where's my?
I need to get a good show.
Whoever's taking minutes, the exact.
He's specific. I can see that, yeah.
Yeah, so they were pretty, they were pretty on it, saying, don't say so moved.
Put on Chairman, how's that?
Okay.
Because that really is. Check on whoever said Mr. Your motion.
Chairman really should just say, I need a motion. And then we actually make the motion to.
That's, that's.
That's, that's probably a good at point.
All kinds of stuff. I was going, oh, okay. Don't do that.
So can we All about rule policy and how you do it next week because they're hurrying on the pharmacy one?
We don't read the agenda because the agenda's already
Mike's here.
Anything, you're changing it or amending it.
We haven't seen anything.
Nothing anymore, that's all gone.
So we'll move on down to the Diamond Pharmacy Service Agreement and the service bid. You guys want to give us an oral and then we would like, I would like to look at it before we approve it.
Yep.
I sent it to Gabby to get to Doug, I think, or I don't know if you guys review them electronically or not, but so it's somewhere in the
We haven't seen anything, Mike, so.
We can get that to you, obviously.
Well, explain to us what we're doing here. Are we changing the, they're going to do the meds through the mail? Is that the one we were talking about?
Yeah, so this is the one where it's, what we discussed, it's a little bit more expensive to go with this company than say Savon or Watkins, but where we're saving is on time, deputy time and gas going to, to and from McCall. This keeps boots on the ground in the jail, which is really the way it should be. No more pulling patrol to go pick up meds for us. It's, it's again, the way several other counties are doing it. It's FedExed overnight. They ship them Monday through Saturday. Still use Savon as a secondary emergency pharmacy, but taking away use from them as much as possible will, will be a huge help, help to us in the jail and
And then you guys will still hand them out to the inmates, so.
No, we hand them to the nurses, the nurses disseminate where they need to, and then they're still doing the med pass.
Okay. And how much more is it than what we've normally been doing?
I mean, it's cents per pill. It depends on what pill you're looking at, but it really, it's, it's maybe two dollars more than, than what we're paying locally. But again, the cost savings, we're keeping the boots in the jail. This is always, huh?
Gas also.
Yeah, gas was
Wear and tear.
Gas was the big one, but honestly, it takes us about two and a half hours to get meds, send a deputy to get meds to McCall.
Right.
That's just taken away from operations where we're severely short staffed and we need all the bodies that we can get.
So what I would like to do if we can is maybe we could get a look at this sometime today, the actual contract, and then maybe postpone this till the end of the day.
Doug, did Gabby hand you a folder or something with that in it possibly?
I mean, I have the agreement.
And we have two, one says an agreement and one says a bid. The same thing, same document.
Yeah, it's the cover sheet or the, the signature. So the agreement and the signature pages are together make one, I guess.
Commissioners, we'll, we'll make sure to get this out to you just in a couple minutes.
Okay, so we're going to postpone this one and hopefully we'll get it done before the end of the day.
Sounds good.
So we're going to move this down the agenda. All right.
Do you have anything?
Anything else? Talk about the propane thing or anything?
No, that, that was a fire call. When we were there just to keep people away until they could get that taken care of, so. And then Lieutenant La Croix and I will be gone starting tonight through Wednesday or Thursday. We have sheriff's meetings, sheriffs and jail commander meetings.
All right.
All right.
Thank you. Move on down to Johanna.
Morning, commissioners. All right, there's a few things going on in the treasurer's office right now. We are well into tax season and collecting payments. We're eight days away from the property tax deadline for the first half of taxes due. So far, we've collected eight million five hundred eighty-one thousand, five hundred one dollars and seventy-two cents. That number's actually going to be a little bit bigger after today because we've received the CoreLogic, which is one of the larger mortgage payments, which is almost three million. So we'll get all of that recorded today and get a better update for you next week on the amount of taxes coming in. My office is also collecting the mail this month, January and February, so my staff has run into the post office twice a day to collect that. Makes sense since we're bringing crates of envelopes back with us. The last two weeks have been busy weeks for me. So not only is it tax season, but there was a couple important conferences that I attended. And I wanted to give you a bit of an update on the Associated Tax payers of Idaho Conference that I attended on November thirtieth down in Boise. This was my first time attending this conference in person. I was able to attend it virtually last year, but it was really cool to be there in person this year. All of the freshman legislators were also in attendance because they had their mandatory training at the time. So I got to sit and chat with our local representatives and our new senator in the Senate, so it was a, a good chance to chat with those people. The beginning of the conference was really focused on the economy. The first three speakers spoke a lot about the impending recession and what the Fed is doing with interest rates right now. And I think my main takeaway as a treasurer, you know, handling county funds is that we make high quality investment decisions, which is what we do in practice and what we're required to by law. So it was, it was a good reassurance and a, a good look at some of the data that's coming out on a national level. One of the more interesting facts that came out of that was nationwide, we're at about seven point seven percent inflation. Well, in the Mountain West region where we are, we're sitting at about nine point three percent. So we are seeing higher grocery prices, higher gas prices, higher everyday expenses. And then after that, they did a panel of business owners and they talked about some of these struggles that they are currently having right now. And one of those things was wage demands for their employees. So not only is it difficult to house prospective or current employees, but they're finding that their wages aren't going as far because of inflation. And then their businesses can't support and can't afford to increase those wages to meet with that inflation demand. So lots of struggles that we see all over the nation are just more compounded here in Idaho. And we're in an interesting situation because Idaho's economy is actually doing very well. We've got a lot of surplus in our taxes here in Idaho. So the legislature is going to have an interesting scenario on their hands this year with, with a lot of new freshmen and they're almost fifty percent in the House and in the Senate and high surplus numbers. So we'll, we'll see what, what our very freshman legislature wants to do with those dollars. Another thing that came up at the conference I attended last week, so I was gone Thursday and Friday with Commissioner Mopin and Assessor Leaper, Assessor-elect Leaper, and then our Commissioner-elect Neil Thompson. We attended the Fall County Officials Institute, which is a two-day training put on by IAC to give new elected officials a good introduction to elected office, but it's also a great opportunity for continuing education for people who have been in office a long time. I think that Assessor McCoy from Ada County was there and he's been in office for thirty years. So it's, it's always good to stay up to date with those learning opportunities, but one of the, I'm sure that Commissioner Mopin will also update you on the conference, but one of the main takeaways that I took from the conference was at the very end, they talked about the property tax initiatives that are going to be before the legislature this year. And last year, I don't know if you remember, there was the one proposal to increase sales tax, which would decrease property tax, but it didn't actually make it all the way through the legislature. Property tax is still a hot topic this session, and there's a couple things, a couple proposed legislation that is gaining traction even before the session starts. One of those is to increase the homeowner's exemption. A couple of years ago, they took homeowner's exemption off of indexing, so it stayed flat at a hundred thousand dollars. Then House Bill three eighty-nine increased it to a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Well, had that homeowner's exemption been indexed from the time that it was stopped, we would be up at about two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, which would provide substantial relief for the people who live in Valley County. So that's a piece of legislation we'll be watching. The other legislation is again, a new proposal, something that hasn't been, it, it actually was proposed two years ago, but it was stuck in a drawer and so it didn't make any progress. But what they're talking about doing is taking sales tax revenue, running it through the distribution formula that is, you know, what they do with, with the sales tax and taking ten percent of that and distributing it out to counties in the same formula or same type program that Circuit Breaker is run. And this would be granted towards people who are homeowners in the county, and it would not take away revenue from the counties. So we would, it wouldn't be a tax shift, like a, increasing the homeowner's exemption is a tax shift from people who own their homes to those who don't. This would not be a tax shift, it would just be income replacement from the state. So that's the second proposal that's gaining traction that we'll have to keep an eye on. And there was a third, but I don't remember what the third.
Hannah, didn't they talk about raising the income threshold for Circuit Breaker as well?
They did that last year, or not the income, sorry, this is the value.
Right.
I don't know about the income threshold.
It used to be, I think, twenty-eight thousand. They were talking about raising it to thirty-two, thirty-three, somewhere in there.
Yeah, I, I am not sure about that. They did talk about increasing the value of the home and they did last year as well. So I think they increased it to three hundred thousand or half of the median value.
I don't remember, what's an half million? I can't remember now.
I don't remember.
But is, did you guys happen to talk about our local representatives about the developer agreements?
I did not speak with them about that.
Well, I'm sure Commissioner Mopin did.
They weren't, they weren't there, but I sent an email last week. I had not heard back from any of them, so I will be following them.
So one of our legislators, Megan Blanksma, was the caucus chair in the last legislative session, so it's her job to train all of the new freshmen. So she was quite occupied in that task while she was there. Yeah, I'm sure that we'll have plenty of opportunity in the future to talk with our legislators. I hope that we get the opportunity to speak with them before the session starts, but if not, we'll make, make the time to talk to them while they're down there.
Well, and then that's what IAC's for in February. That's really the best time to corner, corner some of those guys, but by then, a lot of the bills have already been introduced and they're coming to the end of when you can introduce a bill about the time.
Right.
We have the conference and we need, we need to get in earlier on that stuff.
It's almost like you have to start at that midwinter conference for the next legislative session if you want to have something.
I have been elected Region Three for the Legislative Committee. I will represent Region Three in that Legislative Committee and not be the backup this year when Phil McGreen was a lot
Oh, when IAC, that, that committee, yeah.
I will be fully engaged
That's great news.
In what's happening at the legislature.
Another question I had for you was, I know you can get three months and six months CDs for around four, seven, four, eight now. So hopefully you're keeping that in mind for some of our investments.
So our bank isn't currently offering that high of rates, unfortunately, but we do have investment opportunities through MBS, which aren't, they're not CDs, but they're shorter term bonds. The money that I put the ARPA dollars into was four point three five percent. We're looking, we're seeing some now in the mid, like four point five range. The Fed has another meeting tomorrow and Wednesday where they will decide whether to increase the rate or not. It was anticipated that they would raise it seventy-five basis points or three quarters of a percent like they had in the four previous meetings. But Chairman Powell spoke at a conference on November thirtieth, the same day as that ATI conference, and he made indications that it would be a lower increase. So now the market is predicting about a half a percent increase. I don't believe that this will be the end of it. The market is predicting that the Fed will continue to increase rates all the way through June of next year to help curb that inflation. Inflation has, the, the climb of inflation has slowed, but it hasn't yet plateaued nor started to come down. So if nationwide, we're looking at a seven point seven percent inflation, the goal of the Federal Reserve is to have it at two percent. So we have a long ways to come down before we could start seeing that interest rate come down.
You might ask the bank about brokered CDs.
Okay.
They got another tool that usually has a higher interest rate than a local bank.
Okay.
How much of our ARPA funds are in that four point three percent?
Five million, five hundred, or five million, fifty thousand.
So we're going to do about twenty thousand here. Right?
We will make about fifty-seven thousand in the ninety days that it's in the
It's more, okay, so then it's two hundred thousand here.
Yep. And then we have close to five hundred thousand that's still sitting in the bank available for use if we do decide to put it towards some of these projects we've been talking about.
Did you find out too, if we can invest
The tax?
The tax before we have to pay out?
I haven't. I actually planned to talk to Mr. Oki about that today as well as look at statute. I, I spoke with other treasurers and they don't currently do that. The idea is that we have eight point five million dollars in, in taxes that we've collected that's sitting in our tax collector account until we can turn it over to the taxing districts. Well, we're not going to turn it over until probably January twentieth, which means we could potentially put it in a thirty day fund and make, I don't know, fifty, sixty thousand dollars on the interest, potentially more. So we need to find out statutorily if we're allowed to do that because it's not all our money. That is the taxing district's money as well, so.
Isn't a lot of it in there, LG, local government investment?
That is another investment account that we have, but no, it does not sit in that account. It sits in our Idaho First Bank.
Which it's not getting paid interest.
No, but I think
It earns an interest credit based on the, the fee structure that was negotiated, but it, that's it. It doesn't earn us any money.
But I think there's some rules that you're going to find out you can't.
Right.
Otherwise everyone would be doing it.
I hope to find out if there's rules.
We should be, but we can't.
Maybe that's a legislative update.
It could be.
All right. Anything else?
Nothing else for me.
All right, have, eat some candy.
I'll take one.
Maybe you can write that missing book that explains the tax code.
If, if the general public would read it, I would do it.
Okay, we're going to move on down to our department heads, and the first one up is Annette. Good morning.
Morning. Got an action item this morning. Did you guys get the paperwork on that?
I saw that, yeah.
It's just to extend a permit. They've already extended it once. He wants to do it again. He plans to finish by July. He had a death in his family, so that delayed the construction. He couldn't find a contractor, so that delayed it as well. But he does have a contractor lined up and he's got the money sitting in the bank, so.
And he paid the fee to extend?
He will if you guys
If we do, okay. So I'm going to make a motion that we authorize the extension of permit number twenty twenty zero one eight two.
Second.
Move to second in all favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries.
Aye. That's all I got for you.
That's it?
We're, it's winter. All I got for you.
Okay.
And everything's varied. Oh my God.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Skip?
Good morning. Let's see, get back to my notes. So I went to the IAC Adult Misdemeanor Meeting on Wednesday, an update on the Rule of Eighty. You know, that they passed that for dispatch, adult misdemeanor, juvenile probation, juvenile detention, but they didn't include supervisors. And there was a, there's an issue across the state, they're trying to fix it by transgene titles and, but the latest update was with the leadership there that had met with legislation, legislator, I forget which one, and they're going to be, going to change that language to match more of what it says for IDOC, because a, a lot of administrators are also full, have full units, you know, like Idaho County, Clearwater County. So they're going supposedly get that fixed and that should affect dispatch as well going forward, but we'll see come July, right?
We can always change your job description.
Yeah, and that's what a lot of, a lot have done. But then there's just some questions like, all right, you know, let's get to the heart of what the bill is supposed to do. And it's supposed to, for people that are working those caseloads that are in those environments that are more dangerous. So hopefully, hopefully that's stressed. So hopefully, hopefully that's stressed. I mean, taking some time off a little next week and then on Christmas. Made aware that I need to take care of my son, short notice. So I'm going to be gone up, I'll be on call and available. And I'll spend a couple of days in the office regardless, but.
Okay.
Can you give me the dates and I'll just put it on our calendar?
So next Monday I'll be gone, then I'll be in the office on Tuesday, part of Wednesday. And then I'll just be on call. And next week after that, I'll be off until Thursday. And be available Thursday and Friday. I'm gonna, gonna buy another base station, wireless base station for the SCRAM units. And basically what that does is it allows people just to take it with them. Works off Wi-Fi or cellular service. So as long as they have cell service where they are, it just downloads at night. Two reasons for it. One, we have people that can't drive and they have to come in and download. And it can be really hard on them to get in there. The second is we don't get the information until they download. So if we have a base station and we have somebody we're concerned about, it downloads every night. So we don't have to wait the 10 days before we're in there. And that's within, I always have a little bit extra in the SCRAM budget, usually a couple grand. So I was just going to take it out of that, not asking for any other funds.
You have one now and you're going to end up with two?
No, we have, well, this will make four.
Four, okay.
Yeah. And we, just before I got the job, seven base stations were bought. But then the next year, they went obsolete because they're all landlines. And there's very few people that actually have landlines anymore. And I tried to get them back to SCRAM, but they don't want them. So they're basically paperweights. Let's see, got, been working with another treatment provider. So in our community for substance abuse, we don't have a treatment provider that can do dual diagnosis, the behavioral side and the substance abuse side simultaneously. So right now we have substance abuse and we have mental health, but we don't have the combination. And Brick House Recovery, they work off a, well, it depends on where the person is, but it's almost all virtual. And it's pretty amazing kind of setup they have. So they'll set them the entire package. They'll send them a computer, all the paperwork, everything they need. It's covered by Medicaid, it's covered by insurance. And it has an intensive program where it's like six hours a day. They got dialed in, they have a UA system they use with Schwabs on TV. But I see that being another resource for the county. So I'm just working with them through V Corp, kind of get their foot in the door. There's no money, there's no request for the county. But I'm excited about that opportunity and hopefully we can reach.
So are you able to find a provider that does both though?
Not in Valley County.
Yeah.
It doesn't, so CIC, they can do the substance abuse.
Right.
One counselor, then another counselor can do the other one, but it's split apart. And what Brick House Recovery does, first of all, they do this full medical. So a lot of times what we have with people that are coming in on probation, substance abuse, there's never a psychological. So they go through a gain assessment and it's all on the substance abuse treatment side. Anybody that's been in the game long enough, you know, a lot of time, there's a combination. You know, there's a mental health, whether it's trauma, various things. And really unless you're dealing with that part two, you're just kind of putting a Band-Aid on a saber wound, you know? You're dealing with half the problem. And that's not everyone, but there's, there's quite a few people that fall into that category. So I've, I've been to Grand Oak Meenup in Coeur d'Alene when I was up there. My wife for another thing, it just happened to work out. And got to do some research and look into it. And I'm optimistic. Looks like a great program. So going to be diving into that a little bit.
Do we have any juveniles in detention?
We do not.
So they're out.
They're out. Yeah, we have one on GPS monitoring.
Okay, anything else?
This might be a conversation offline, but so GPS monitoring, electronic monitoring, how does somebody know if they get stopped? How did somebody know they're supposed to be on that?
Well, that's, that's another conversation we've had with law enforcement. So up until, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, what we do is we just send them a list. And it was just to curtsy, hey, here's the people that we have on probation. But it's, it's a list generated from Odyssey. And it really doesn't give very much information except for person's name, the date, they start probation, their expiration and their case number. And so after talking with law enforcement, Dan Meddy with P and P, he, he does like an Excel spreadsheet, which also includes their address, contact information. And we're going to work out also with ours where if somebody has a requirement, that we'll have that on that list. But other than that, so there's two different kinds of requirements. There's those that are ITD, like for an interlock. And that should be when dispatch pulls it up, interlock requirement should be right there. You know, they should be able to see that. If it's a probation thing, they don't know unless we tell them. They don't know if they have a SCRAM or if they're, you know, a handheld breath unit or GPS. So if they had contact in the past, what they do is they'd call us and we'd tell them. Or if they're looking for somebody, we'd just give them the information.
Well, we're going to try and do that more often, correct?
Yeah, so we're, Molly just talked to Kelly, emailed her last week and just asked her if she needed any help with that. And what they're doing is they're basically filling it out. So they have all, we send them all our current information of people. They're filling out the spreadsheet and they'll give that to us. And then each one of the probation officers will be responsible to keep that updated.
Well, good.
Timely. And then just send them their list, you know, instead of, because between Steve, Katie, me, Jac and Molly, I mean, that's like 300 people. And the list they're getting right now, it's just trying to go through it all. And it can be confusing, one part, one could say like SUP, like supervised, and another one won't, but they're on the same list and they'll be like, does that mean supervised or unsupervised?
So you're working on updating that process?
Well, through working with them, they're, yeah, they're actually doing the hard work. They're gonna, they're gonna put it, here's the format we like, here's the information we want, here's the information we have so far with your people, and we'll fill in the rest and keep it updated.
And then also, I think, which is important, is the people that are off probation. You know, when we had the meeting at IDOC here a few weeks back, that was an issue that they don't know who's really not on and who's come off probation. And so that, there, I think if I remember, you guys were updating like every month. So we tried to ask for that to happen on a more regular weekly basis.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna do it as timely as possible.
Right.
And then kind of what we worked out with Kelly and, you know, we're just starting it. So we'll get going with what we got and then we'll tweak it as we need to go. But we'll do like a simple highlight it and send it to her. And they'll know if it's highlighted, they're off. And a lot of times, all the time, they have their expiration date. But if we file a PV prior to their expiration date, the court still retains jurisdiction. So there's, there's information like that that's just, without getting it from us, they're not going to know. And we'll, we'll work out how to, with the Sheriff's Department, how to do that efficiently and what makes sense to them.
Okay, anything else?
Really tough one to follow, especially with your acronyms. But anyway, when we talk about probation, somebody leaves the facility and they're on probation. I understand it's GPS-type probation. We know where those people are at, sit 24/7. And what, what, what happens if someone calls in and asks about, for a, say, this person gets stopped someplace and they get, you know, or they ask for information? What do they get?
So first of all, not, not everybody's on GPS. Matter of fact, very few. So when we're talking about electronic monitoring, talking about GPS monitoring, that usually represents somebody like a court order, a lot of times it was pretrial. Or maybe it's somebody that just got on probation and they're a domestic violence person and we have some concerns. Or they keep frequenting places that we tell them not to. And then even then, those programs, we don't keep them on forever. It's usually like a month or two. So I don't know if that answers your question. And sometimes it's a SCRAM unit, which doesn't do GPS at all. All it does is detect alcohol.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's a handheld breath unit, which has a GPS component, but it's pretty sketchy. But it's, it's all based on the individual's needs and what they're doing, what they're not doing.
The important thing is when you're on probation that they're properly vetted.
Yeah, so it just depends on them, you know? There's a lot of people that get on probation that do very well. They went to jail, they didn't like it, they don't like the expense, they feel remorseful for what they did, and they do self-correction and go through it successfully. I mean, a lot of people do that well. But as far as your other question, when law enforcement calls us, then we can tell them. We have that information. If somebody from the public calls us, we're allowed to give them public information. So anything that's in their court file that's not sealed, we're allowed to give them that information. So mom calls about, perfect example, mom calls about her daughter's ex-husband. Happens a lot. And has complaints, going to the bar, he's doing this, wants to know if he's testing positive or anything. And all we can say, yes, he is on probation. We can't tell you about his UA results. We will definitely look into it. And we did, we call him, we'll have him come in for UA, we'll interview him. But unless we're there to see it or law enforcement's there to see it, we have to take it with a grain of salt because not all the time, it's not all the time true. Sometimes people are angry and, and make false accusations as well. So we just deal with it as fairly as we can.
Thank you. Okay, anything else for Skip? I think we're good.
All right.
Thank you. Next victim is Melissa.
Thanks for signing the standard extension agreement last week. Had a sickness run through the office, it took me out for most of the week. And then Jill followed suit. And so if we didn't have coverage for our office hours, we just put a sign on the door, just letting people know when we would be expected to be back and to leave a message. I'm currently doing program planning for next year. And in the next year, I would, I would like to request a time for the University of Idaho Extension to come and present to the commissioners on the types of programming we do and what we have in, you know, what we've done in the past, what we're planning for the future to the commissioners. And I can work with Doug on trying to pinpoint a time to do that presentation. As far as programming, the only program that I have coming up is in a couple of days. And it'll be the Peer Learning Network and the discussion is going to be mental health. And so that'll be interesting to see different communities discuss what that looks like in their communities. And so that happens continually, the second Wednesday of every month. And it's Montana, Wyoming and Idaho meeting now. Other programs that I am planning for 2023 is that I was invited to do ripple mapping for the V Corp, which is the Valley County Opiod Response Project or Team. I think I got that correct, but acronyms. I'll be doing a virtual listening session. And so I'm hoping to do the commissioner presentation before that virtual session, just as another opportunity to be able to advertise and invite people to come to that virtual listening session. But primarily that's going to be working with the Advisory Council for the Extension Office. And I'll be combining Valley and Adams County to do that input. And other programs is the Mushrooms Bee's Victory Garden Serious Firewise Programming. And I'll be reviewing the annual Citizen Planner Curriculum and then continuing with the committees that I'm involved with and then trying to pull people together around the Community Garden Committee focused in the McCall area. I am going to be out of the office 12:23 to 1:02. University traditionally closes for about a two-week period. And so I'll be out of the office during that time. Allison's going to be taking some leave during that time as well. And then Jill is going to be following the county holiday schedule and maintaining office hours. And since Allison is here, do you want to report on 4H programs?
Take one, one.
I'm going to bring one to Jill.
There's some up here too, guys.
Take the bag.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Melissa asked me to come to update some programs and let you know, last week, so yeah, we were a little short around the staff, but did three, delivered three programs, a STEM program. We have a smaller countywide program for cloverbuds, kids ages five to seven, focused on heavy, or healthy living and social emotional learning, which is a big topic these days. So engaging that and making 4H a practice. They're meeting at a local level to see what we can do to engage with them. We have, I wrote a small horse grant for two clinicians to come up this summer. So we'll see if we get those funds in January. It's flying by, let's see. Programs in the future, we will do more work with Donnelly Library, after-school programming. Katie went to that program last week as well and has been going every Friday to do cooking. And we picked up two new programs for sowing in McCall and in Cascade. So we'll steam ahead. We're getting all the livestock requirements and just, I guess what I'm trying to say is the work that the kids need to do, they need to secure their breeders and make sure that they're all on track and ready and set up to have animals. And leaders are getting certified. Enrollment is definitely increasing and there's a lot of family names that I've not seen on there before, so that's exciting. And a lot more traffic coming in and out of our office, so it's been a pretty great fit for us.
Appreciated handout that you gave us about your programming for the 4H. And that pretty is quite an eye-opener to read some of that stuff and the complexity of the issues that you're dealing with in that program. So I think it sounds like it's your very nice program and very proper. Proud to be a part of that.
Yeah, a little bit of that ag piece and also being able to adapt to different needs. 4H is definitely not limited in just the ag component, so.
Your part-time is Katie?
Mm-hmm, Katie Need, yes.
Need.
And she's very busy, I'm sure.
Yeah, but we use those hours, like you read about, just try to keep her on track for training, but she's still working with the STEM group here in Cascade and then that day in Donnelly. So she works at a coffee shop and then goes and does that right there. So we're trying to mediate her time really well and glad to have her, for sure. Our arm is a lot longer now to be able to get to more kids. Anything for me or?
I don't think so. Okay, move on down.
Moving the box out there.
Yeah, your can's not closer to the action. They won't come up to the table, it's too scary.
It is scary to go up to the table.
Okay, I don't really have a lot. We did get a patrol deputy hired. He's got his house in Boise for sale. So I'm not sure when he's going to start, but probably sometime in January. And then we have a few candidates. I sent one to Jeff the other day. So we are going to try, I called him to see about an interview. So we'll be interviewing that one.
That's good news.
Yeah, Detention has a new one, I think, as well as Patrol has a new applicant. But they're very slow and they're not coming in very fast. It's kind of disappointing. I am working on a training for the Sheriff's Office on Mental Health. And then also doing a training for the Leaders Group on how we figure out salaries to help empower them and give them more information. And then I have been writing some of the procedures that I'm missing as well. So it's kind of what I'm working on. And then for everybody else's benefit, I will be out on 12/29. And then January 17th through the 24th, I'll be out of, out of state. So warmer territory. So what questions do you have?
So, Anna, we still short two at the road with this new one coming on?
The new one has not been interviewed yet, so we're down three at the road. Yeah, yeah. And that, Jeff is having to plow because we are down three. And the supervisors have been doing their routes as well. So unfortunately, the supervision of the other employees kind of goes by the wayside a little bit. But we're, we're working on trying to get them filled. I just don't know where the people are. Oh, and then at the. Um, oh, and then, um, Ed did send an email regarding McCall Donnelly School District doing a CDL, um, program. And, um, Ed had told me about that. In the meantime, I had called Sage, um, CDL Training. And they have been working with McCall Donnelly School District. And he said that within a few months, we might have an opportunity to have the practical training training with their trucks here. Um, the the radical training, the on can all be done online. So once they go through that program, then they can get their learns from it and then they do their practicals. So, um, that's something that I've been kind of working with them on. Um, I'm sure we have many organizations around the county that would love to be able to send people there. So, or at least to let people know that it's there.
Just wondered, we should do something on the webpage and maybe star news when we get to that point.
Yeah, when we get to that.
Get nailed down where it is.
Yeah, get it publicized and really get it going. And Department of Labor will help us with that.
Great.
And Department of Labor will pay for 90% of the training for, uh, like a CDL training as well. So, um, it is a grant, uh, and he said, you know, several people will start into that and then drop out, which is unfortunate. So, um, but but they're definitely our partner in this program as well.
This was an interesting discussion with Matt. Apparently, the state actually has a program, and I don't recall, Pat, you probably know a lot about that. But they actually, for every high school student, there is a fund. And I think it's like $4,000 a student for just this kind of thing, you know, and.
Three thousand, but there's seven, five, five colleges they can go to.
Mm hmm.
So it's an education fund, tuition fund.
Tuition fund, yeah. And, uh, but that's an important part of this for our discussion. And we, uh, sounds like maybe we'll get Matt here to talk to us and visit.
Yeah, I'll call him. I'll call him with the number that you gave me and and set up a time for him to come in and visit with you. I'll probably be in jail. Well, I'm thinking that he's off, uh, school is off probably the, um, 27th of December or maybe Jan- January 3rd. So if he's available, have him come to one of those if we have an opening.
Yeah, and maybe bring some of the students with him. It's kind of, it's an interesting topic.
It is, it is.
There was two things that came up in the training on Friday, and I already confirmed with Pat. But ICrimp really wanted us to make sure that we had annual harassment training. That's awesome. We have annual harassment training. And then also ICrimp had approved our personnel policy manual, and they have. So those are the two things that we had to come home and ask.
Yep. So when we get the new one ready to go, I'll send it down to ICrimp as well. And they can take a look at it and give it their blessing or not. So, yep.
Okay.
Anything else?
Not popping in my little brain yet.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Jeremy. Morning.
Morning, Commissioner, Mr. Jeremy. Um, the things that we got going on right now, um, our current priority is, um, getting the new PCs imaged and deployed, which we have started working on. We are moving Larry and the Recreation Department down here to the North End tomorrow. We got all that cleaned out, so we'll get that moved down there and out of the hole, the cave, the dungeon, the, yeah.
It'll be exciting. Thank you.
Um, no updates on either of the of the Zipley projects at Lake Fork or um, a mayor title, so it's still, right now, it's still looking like spring. Both of those. Um, the, uh, grant for the sweat program for the new MDTs was approved by the state, so I ordered those, so they'll be coming in. The deputies will have brand, brand new, brand new tough books out in their trucks instead of the old beat-up ones they have now. So hopefully at some point in a couple of months, everybody will have all brand-new stuff.
That's awesome. That's a lot of money. And it's in all of the, all of our vehicles, Jeremy?
Yes.
That is awesome.
Yeah, they approved 90,000, I think, and I bought 20, uh, 12, 25, 23 or 25, and it was like 90,500. So I'll have to, I'll have to find a place to pay that $500, but that's, that will be too big of a deal.
So what happens to the old ones?
We'll just recycle. Yeah, we'll pull the hard drives and destroy them and then recycle the electronics. Um, working on getting all the phones ordered for the deputies that we talked about through AT&T and FirstNet and get that going. And see how that does. So I'm working on that. We're in the process of, you know, the transition to Tyler and Code for all of the financial stuff. We've had a couple of meetings. We're filling out some forums to get them all of the, you know, the names of our employees will be using the system and, um, you know, our, how our accounts are set up and all that kind of stuff they need to know to set up our our system. And then the recording stuff for like marriage licenses and deeds and stuff, that's, um, it's also Tyler, but it's kind of a separate division. It's called Eagle. And we'll start that process. I think our first meeting is this week. So we'll get that process. Now they'll want all the same stuff. We'll have to show them how all of our, you know, recorded documents are set up and get them all that information so they can get.
But then will MicroFish go away or will we still use MicroFish and all that?
Um, are you talking about the stuff like in the back of the clerk's?
Yeah, all the recorded stuff.
Office. I think that'll all stay, we'll, we'll transition all of the documents that are in Computer Arts Now and into Tyler. But all the stuff in the old books, um, unless you want to pay to have somebody scan them, I think that'll all stay the way it is.
That would be a lot more than the accessory stuff. That's a lot of information.
Yeah, that, that little, that little room back there, that old stuff, that'll stay the way it is.
And that's a vault, so.
Yeah.
If we were to burn, then.
Yeah, but there's probably going to be grants for doing that very thing here for long. Maybe if it's all electronic, then we don't have to have it.
Yeah.
It's so modern, we won't know how to do anything.
I know. Then everything will crash and we'll go do anything.
We won't have it. Go back to paper and pencil.
Jeremy, do not put that out there. What did you just do?
Um, and then the other, the other thing I'm working on is some, uh, tax-related stuff to, um, try and get some tax information available on our online map so that we can get rid of some of the ways that the title companies access our data. So that's another thing that I'm working on with Kara and Johanna's treasure.
And thank you, by the way, for sending that breakdown.
Oh, yeah, you're welcome.
Appreciate that.
You had asked me a couple of weeks ago that you wanted to see that, so I sent those. And like I said, I'll, I'll send the, um, update or I'll scan the updates in with the, with the invoices going forward. All I got is, do you have any questions for me?
On the Zipley for the title company, I think you mentioned this, but I just want to reaffirm that the title company is going to reimburse us or cover part of, part of that cost. Because they're going to benefit from it as well.
Uh, they won't benefit from it. It'll be just for us.
It'll be just for us, so there's not going to be any kind of cost here. Okay.
Nope, that'll be all us.
Can't think of anything else.
Me.
I guess we're good.
All right.
Right. Thank you. Uh, Cindy.
Morning.
Good morning.
Um, Tamrac will be here next Monday to give you their update on their three-year plan. We had pre-scheduled them.
Do you know, does it include paving any roads?
No, 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 no. This is just the extension and what what they plan on doing within the next three years.
Okay.
This is pre-existing approvals based upon the current capital contribution agreement.
Well, I know when we talked about the employee housing, that we said somewhere between phase one or two or three, you guys have got to do something on West Mountain Road. And they said they would do that. We'll find out when they're here.
Right. Um, you, you've seen all the requests to reschedule the Tamrac Falls Appeal, uh, time slot. If we do that, we don't have enough time to notice. We would have to choose some other day. And our ordinance requires us to put it on the, the, the next noticeable type of agenda. So
I'm not interested in moving time slots every time somebody wants to do an appeal. I think that's, that's terrible precedents.
And also, there's also rights of the applicant that you have to protect.
And that's why the ordinance says it has to be on the next agenda
Right.
of the board that we can get noticed, um, which should have been probably the 27th. We might have been able to squeak it in, but I won't be here that week. And then January 3rd, you had originally not scheduled. That's why we put it on the, the 9th. So we'll just keep it at that one.
And, you know, we need to remind people they can use the Teams meeting too. I mean, that's, we have, we've expanded the ways that you can participate with us. And so that's another reason that, you know, we can watch the video and everything else.
And that's a really great idea, at least give them that opportunity.
Absolutely.
To get on Teams and make, uh, three at that hearing, and then they could come in if they're opposed or a proponent doesn't matter, but that's available to them.
They can contact Doug and and schedule if if they want their three minutes.
Yep. This is, this is not a long, this conversation's been going on a long time. You know, ever, forever since I've been in PZ, there's been the discussion about, uh, county commissioners having these type of things when the public is really, has to struggle to get here. So I don't personally think we ought to gloss over that, you know, that request without, you know.
And Ed, I agree with that. When we didn't have the ability to do it the way that we do it in today's world. I mean, it used to be that I had to take my lunch hour if I needed to come down and present, and that was frustrating. But if I would have had a Teams invite, I could have done it right for my office and hopped on.
I know, but we, you know, I know we have, we have better technology, but again, not everybody does. And the time, if you're, if you're, if you want to tune in on this on Teams, and if you're working eight to five, then you'd have to still take off time for your job to do it. So I'm not saying that we should change that. But I think that we need to make it quite clear that we're, we're, uh, considerate of those requests and have a pretty solid reasoning for not, um, going there. And I understand the circumstances, that we're all in with that. We had some talk today about, you know, for instance, just the, um, rules of appeal that needs to be talked about as well. I mean, they need to understand. People need to understand. And so, yeah, I just don't, I, I'm sympathetic for what their request. It's just that, uh, we may or may not be able to do exactly that. But I think we need to have a discussion.
If we were to take into consideration this moving forward and doing night meetings, I mean, I'm not willing to work 12-hour days. You've been here for, you know, this timeframe. So those would have to be another night of the week to do something. Because doing it after our regularly scheduled meetings where we're, you know, on regular times, we're normally eight hours anyway.
I agree. I'm not much good after five o'clock.
And we've never had any special, well, we did have a couple of special comprehensive plan night meetings for the Board of County Commissioners, but typically our hearings are during the day. Um, I mean, there's people that work at night too. So.
Well, their night meeting is planning and zoning. I mean, that is the, we, we always have night meetings. And those are the planning and zoning meetings.
And there's a reason for them being at night.
And that's part of your record.
Rest here. So I'm not, you know, so I'm not saying that we have to change anything. But I just think that people need to understand clearly. If we don't, we're not able to change that. Probably not going to buy too hard into the fact that you don't want to work harder. So we kind of, you know.
You know, I take offense of that statement. I think we work pretty hard.
I know.
And I think we also give the opportunity for those that want to engage with us, different venues to do that. I mean, I've been the advocate for transparency and making sure that everything remains on YouTube, that we have Teams and meetings, you know, open. So I, you know, it's not that I want to work, don't want to work harder. I think I spend a lot of time for the county.
There's no challenge, no challenge there. I just saying, that is an excuse, though, that we could give people we don't want to work, you know, at different times. And so we have to, we have to figure out why we don't want to do that. And it has to be very carefully, I think, um, trans committed for instance to the people.
Maybe it's just simply courthouse hours are from eight to five.
Well, and I think about, you know, holistically, what do we have to do? We expand all of our security because we've got to have security here during those meetings. So you're asking security to stay late too. You know, we have to have a clerk here. We've got to have everybody participate in a meeting other than our regularly scheduled business hours. And if, so if we do this for one hearing, you set a precedence so that anyone that wants to have, you know, that meeting moving forward to do an appeal, they're going to request the same thing. Why wouldn't they?
That's right.
So every single appeal is going to be in the evening. And I don't think that sets good precedents. Our business hours are this. And because of the support needed to conduct county commissioner meetings, and we have allowed opportunities for people to get a Teams invite, you know, to participate in different ways with our meetings. And people are able to do that every single commissioner meeting, not just on an appeal basis.
Anyway, I think that, I think we've achieved part of what my goal is. We have to talk about it. And they need to understand why we do the business the way we do. And so, uh, I think it'll be much more clear.
Okay.
Hey, Cindy, anything else?
Let's do something different now.
Well, I think what you got to really consider is that you don't have trials after five o'clock. I mean, courthouse functions are from eight to five. And we are a legislative litigious, I mean, we do all different kinds of hearings here, and it's got to be during those hours. As Sherri said, if we go after hours and we're paying a lot more overtime for a lot of people to come in here and expect them to work their evenings, the clerks, the security, all that stuff, even planning and zoning staff, and when that's, they should be home with their families. And, uh, you know, and you're talking about maybe rules of an appeal. Maybe that's something we need to look at is the fact that if you're going to appeal a CUP, maybe you should be part of those people that live within 300 feet.
The ordinance specifically does say affected parties. And there is a definition for affected parties.
What does that say?
I don't recall. You can Google it. Um, they have, it's parties of interest, applicants.
Well, what I'm worried about, Cindy, is somebody from Boise could appeal our CUPs up here. And I think, you know, well, you're really even affected by this. How far do you extend that line out? But I don't have an issue with keeping it at three o'clock in the afternoon during courthouse hours. I think that's appropriate.
Yeah, it, it says affected party means a permit applicant, landowner, lease easement option holder, or an individual who has identifiable and substantial legal interest in the property. But it has to be somebody, you know, an affected party um, is who an appellant has to be. But that's a, a whole other conversation.
Yeah, that would take someone to vet all those.
Um, tonight at 5:30 is that firewise discussion via Zoom. Um, I'll be participating in that.
I have that on my calendar too. Did they actually send us the Zoom link?
I, I have to, I, yes, because I, I'm going to watch it from home or participate from home. And I think I did email it to my personal.
Okay, I'll double check.
Tomorrow at noon is a discussion with DEQ, I believe it is, on water monitoring. And that's the extent of my knowledge on that. I think, El, you sent me that.
So it's not with DEQ. I'm not familiar with the acronym of the stuff. I can't attend. I have another meeting, but.
I'm going to listen in and see, see what it's all about.
Is that for just this area or was that statewide?
Not a clue.
I don't remember that, Cindy. I'm sorry.
Send me the email and I'm, it's at 12 and I'm going to watch it.
Tomorrow at 12?
Yes.
And that's a Zoom?
I believe so.
You make sure that we have that? We probably already do, but I can't recall.
Since you sent it to me. It's saying it came out from, what is her name?
Pam, Pam Pace.
Hmm. Well, let's see. Anyway.
Anyway, so I am taking off Wednesday. And then I will be taking off the week between Christmas and New Year's. And we continue to be busy.
I don't see it anywhere Cindy, I don't know where it went.
I'll see if I can find it and send it back.
Are you done?
I am done.
All right, when are we going to interview the other applicants?
Two o'clock today.
That's what that is.
There are four people.
And we're doing all four today?
Yes.
Okay.
And that was something that was unclear to me until I followed up on it with another, you did send that out, that they would all be here today. And I would kind of missed that one. And I was kind of thinking we'd do like we did last week and spread them out, but it's going to be a long afternoon.
From two to four, so they'll sit out in the hall and then one will come in at a time. That gives you everybody a half an hour. Clerk?
We need two hours.
We've scheduled it for the last matter of the day so the commissioners can take their time during their interviews.
Okay. Now, as you know, I, it raised a red flag with me that we're going to do it in an executive session, but after reviewing it quite a bit, I can understand why. It's just that it's still, it's not the only process to do that. But this is a unique situation. I don't know if we had five applicants.
Well, we've had multiple applicants before. We've never done it in executive session.
Never done executive.
I had queried the, Mr. Oki had, had said we could do that and.
I think it allows more freedom of expression in executive when people know they're not being filmed.
But at the same time, it, if anybody's interested from the public and the individuals there, it makes it a little tough to hear the conversation, you know, to know what happened. And I, so there's, you know, something to think about going into the future.
And maybe in the future, we don't do it in executive session anymore.
But we can do it in the process.
Since we did one, we probably should do the others.
Yes, you have to treat them all the same.
I also asked Idaho Association of Counties this question to make sure. They said absolutely, executive session, you know.
Well, it's not, you have to, it's just it, that's an option.
Okay, anything else Cindy?
I have nothing.
I just sent Pam's email to these guys, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Have a great day. Next victim up is Larry. Good morning.
Good morning. What a busy couple of weeks, huh?
Are you doing the pray for snow parties or what?
Oh, no, I've even turned my, my snow dance the opposite direction to try to shut it down. I'm, I'm just glad we got this cold weather coming in to try to get things to settle down a little bit. The avalanche danger is pretty high and, and even the guys, they were, I was talking to one of my guys that groomed last night out at Fisher Creek says, you're going along and he, he can barely groom. And you can see where people jump off the trail. He says, there's just big holes and jump off and they're stuck. Kind of fun, really. So we've received 18 applications so far for advisory board.
That's awesome.
That is on schedule for you guys on the third. The things that need to be discussed is how the process, the interview process, appointments. We do this as a work session, but I guess we'll, we'll decide that on the third. Dave's going to put together a packet, so we've got a packet of everybody. I'm going to go ahead and score them ahead of time and the way I feel about it and just hand them off.
I think the most important thing is that we get a diverse membership to the board.
Yeah.
From all different user groups.
Well, and it's, it's diverse, I'll tell you what, I'm, I'm pretty impressed with the.
It's awesome.
The qualities were great and all sorts of different groups.
So Larry, on the third, are we discussing the process or are we actually reviewing applicants?
I think. We, we, we need to discuss the process first. That's the one thing we haven't done is exactly how we're going to go about this. So on the third, we'll discuss the process and then we'll move forward after that.
Some kind of scoring criteria, some kind of applicant, you know, questions so that we're looking at everybody the same.
Yes.
Would be really helpful.
Okay. We can put something together.
And you heard the last conversation, we make sure that we include that transparency thing into the, into discussion.
Oh, absolutely.
The new deal and it's really important.
Yeah, yeah.
As evidenced by getting 18 applications.
Well, we had 19, but one of, one of them was from Adams County, so we kind of.
Do they own property here?
Right, right. I, I mentioned to you guys before that there's a, a group of people around the state that do not want ATVs and UTVs on groomed track, ATVs and UTVs on groomed trails. And of course, we do not support that at all because we haven't, we haven't had any problem with it. They're part of the, of the public, of the recreational public and, and we want to support them all we can. But so what we're trying to do is education and we've come up with an educational flyer that we're going to hand out in the parking lots and I'll give you guys each one. There, but together, there are some questions on it because like all legislation, when you talk about description and then get farther into it, things change. But this has all been vetted.
Sir?
Thank you, sir. Larry, as I understand, even, even if we do allow this, there are exceptions.
So the way the county does it now, we've already approved the use of UTVs in, on our groomed trails through county code. We do have exceptions and the only exceptions are on Warren Wagon Road. And those are for full-time homeowners, not part-time people, it's full-time homeowners.
But didn't I understand that there are some trails that don't lend themselves to this?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And, and we're having those discussions now and we have not had a problem. I, I just, the closest thing we came to a problem was there was a club of track UTVs that went up Anderson Creek and they're all coming down in the evening. And I had a groomer go up early and trying to get everybody around each other was a little bit of a problem. But we haven't had any, I haven't had any complaints. The advisory board hasn't had any complaints. Complaints are basically coming out of Boise and Fremont County.
As Larry, while we're on the subject, have we renewed that application out of Warren? For the, the residents that live back there? Because that was an annual.
That's annual, yeah, yeah.
Has that been done yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, it's, it's working pretty good. It, it really helped when we changed the rules at Francie Wallace to full-time residents can get there, can leave a trailer there for a certain, you know, for 150 bucks. And, and that cleaned it up a lot. And so we're, we're in pretty good shape. Yeah, fortunately, Carol Lundrum's been helping out quite a bit as a representative from back there. She's a pretty incredible volunteer.
Larry, I'm sorry, I may have missed it, but are you asking us to change our ordinance?
No.
To meet this?
Nope.
No, because this doesn't need our ordinance, so.
It actually does.
Oh, does it?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, it's under, under a thousand pounds.
But it's under 2,000 pounds for anything other than a snowmobile. So a UTV or a tracked four-wheeler is under 2,000 pounds. Snowmobile by descriptions, under a thousand pounds. And they have to have their snowmobile tags on them, either a one-year or two-year tag. And the, the question's coming up because right now, how do you ask law enforcement to go, okay, that one I know is 2,500 pounds, go weigh it, you know? How, how do you do that? And legislatively, it's unladen and a lot of the larger ones do come in just under 2,000 unladen. So there, there are people that are looking at the possibility of having width restrictions. And then that, I think we could be a lot more in favor of a width restriction. Go to 64 inches and get rid of the weight issue because you can easily tell if it's, if it's wider than 64 inches. But right now, we didn't, we didn't want to see legislation. I personally, representing the county, didn't want to see legislation telling users they can't be on our trail systems that, when they're helping pay for it. And it's a big part of our trail system right now.
Yeah, but you're seeing a lot of these UTVs that are getting bigger and bigger and bigger that can hold six people and.
That's a summer problem and a winter problem and, and it needs to be addressed. We'd like to address it starting out with education during the summer. I think that's going to have to come from the Forest Service.
Yeah. It's a different summer, winter issues are kind of somewhat different, but you know, it's just, they'll produce whatever people want, so you have to kind of.
Yes, the money doesn't seem to end, does it?
Probably the, the weight is like you say, much less than important than the width, you know, in this case.
And we did, we had a meeting with our attorney to, to talk about the two major RS2477s that we want to try to look at to see if they're appropriate for later. The, we are moving downstairs to the new office tomorrow is the big move. Pretty excited about that. If you guys want to show up and help, there's really not much to move. Anyway, any questions?
I'm on the attorney, we talked about a fee. Any money you're going to need to hire an attorney for the RS2477?
I think that would be between Oki's staff and.
Okay. Because I think that's an option.
Larry, I'm looking at our ordinance. And it, it does state the 2,000 pounds or less. It doesn't talk about, let's see. Valley County shall have a certificate of numbered trails passed attached to their equipment, including but not limited to snowmobiles, bicycles, off-road vehicles. So off-road vehicles are the tracks? It doesn't specifically call out that they've got to be tracked.
No, but the, but the state, the state code, that 67-7112 goes to a tracked vehicle.
Do we need to amend our ordinance to match that?
We could, I don't, haven't had that issue, but if that would be something, I guess I could ask Oki about.
Yeah, that's certainly something to think about down the road, but most people don't drive up there in tires. Every once in a while, you get somebody thinks it's a plowed road and it'll go up their ways.
People.
Not to disagree with you, but for Christmas trees, they'll drive up there with anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, they get towed off quite often. We actually, I'm doing a little squirrel here, but last week, somebody from Montana who's working down in Yellow Pine, power outfit, he had a truck and a trailer and drove up Warren Wagon Road towards Johnson Creek hoping to get to Yellow Pine. He made it about 150 yards.
Yeah. The other thing that we don't have on here is motorcycles, track motorcycles.
A track motorcycle by state code is a snowmobile.
Is a snowmobile, okay.
Yeah.
Larry, you have one other one here that's probably going to, you're going to probably end up dealing with at some point. Electric bikes, I mean, they can ride that trail.
Be interesting to see where they plug in, but.
No, no, you know.
I know. Yeah, we, we've got fat tire bikes, but you're right, there, there will come a time when.
All that stuff's going to eventually be, have to be added.
Yeah, it's interesting you say that because the Forest Service considers all electric bikes motorized vehicles. So, yeah.
So it's interesting because our code says a certificate of numbered trails passed attached to a bicycle.
Yes.
How do the bicycles get, so to be on a groomed trail, they have to go get a snowmobile.
Yeah, they get, they get a, the tag and, and they do do that, yeah. Now, the dog sleds, they put the tags on them every time they run their thing. And we've had, there's one skier, this lady is amazing. She actually lives in Yellow Pine and she skis in and out and she's got a tag.
Interesting. That's, you know, I mean, it's reality that that's going to happen. But I know that the fat tired bikes, I mean, they're for some time now, they've been up here on the ski trails all over, I mean, they're used.
I've really, I've really tried to bring in the group that goes to Fremont County. They'll show up there with 1,500 of them.
Yeah.
And I'd love to have them come here and, you know, do one of the regattas here or whatever, you know, and, and spend their money.
You know, there, and as far as that power thing that you alluded to, I mean, you can carry a half a dozen batteries if you want to.
Yeah, yeah.
You know.
That's true. I, I, you know, I, I'm just always proud of Valley County because we were the first to start making those changes. We were the first to allow the fat tire bikes. We were the first to, to try to bring more partners in to solve problems and take care of the system. And I have yet to have anybody, when I go, hey, you know, you need a sticker because that's what pays for the trail. I have yet to have anybody say, oh, I mean, they all say, yeah, I'll help take care of the trail because they want a groomed trail.
They want a taxi.
Yeah, yeah. It's just kind of nice having Valley County be first again.
All right.
Anything else?
Anything else for Larry?
Thanks guys.
Thank you.
Can we just get a bit of clarity of how you want it on the agenda for the interviews for the recreation committee? Do we want to, do the commissioners want to receive the 18 applicants resumes and then determine who is going to be qualified for an interview first?
You know, honestly Doug, the way I'm thinking of it right now is I don't know why we can't put them all on there.
Well, like I said, you'll get a packet with all, all 18 applications and that, and we can kind of communicate by email.
Should we put that on for review of the 18 applicants for next week?
I think that's.
That'd be nice.
For next week, yeah, we could do it.
It'd be nice if we could do that.
Yeah.
And we interview some of them if they can't show up by, by Zoom or YouTube?
That's up to our clerk and our IT program. And I, I agree that we need to be trying to do more and more of that, keep people off the road and spend and.
Well, and I think normally those kind of discussions that we have is going to lead to a result. I mean, it's going to solve itself out.
Sure.
Just through the discussion, but.
So right now, we'll get you guys, this week, we'll get all the applications to you in a packet. And then next Monday, or yeah, is it next Monday, we'll.
It doesn't close until Thursday, so.
That's true.
You guys don't work Friday. So I mean, literally, we could have another five or 10 applicants between now and next Monday.
Yes, we could.
So I don't know that Monday is going to be.
That's kind of why we put it, that's why we wanted it on the third.
Yeah, that's maybe we need to delay it another week.
What's the 27th o'clock?
Yeah. Doug, is 27th pretty full?
27th is good for us.
27th is okay in the afternoon.
Let's shoot it for the 27th and then we'll have.
To review the initial 18 applicants?
Or any more that sign up till Thursday.
To review the.
Applications.
Applications, excuse me.
No interviews on that day, no?
I think we need a process, I mean.
That's what we got to come up with.
Interview 18 people, if they don't have any qualifications, why are we interviewing them?
Probably best to weed that part of it out.
We probably need to at least maybe look.
If you come up with a parameter of questions like, are you here full-time? Are you here in the wintertime? Are you here in the summertime? I mean, you know.
To meet our bylaws, I mean, to review it next to the bylaws, at least to make sure that.
So we'll try to put the questions together for you as we send the packet over. And that way, when you get a free time, because that's my plan, is just to go through them.
And then we can add questions too, if we feel like.
Absolutely.
Throw this in here as well.
Yeah.
And we can build a format.
And then on the 27th, then we'll address qualifieds?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go. And then move to the following, maybe to further up. Or appointments?
So.
We can have that discussion on the 27th also.
Yeah.
Look, just to see what our timing is, I know that we have some, there's quite a few things on the third as far as. I think there's, are there appeals on the third? Maybe not, maybe they didn't get scheduled that day. I don't know if there's time then.
Appeal comes in next month, I think.
Cool, all right, I'll get, we'll get that over to you guys.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Larry. Hey, now I know that Village of Grounds is not able to attend today, so we're going to go back and talk about the pharmacy. You guys, they did send it to us. I have a couple of questions, Mike, on it. And I'm glad Oke is here. The first one is the term and termination, if this is for a five-year, we have to renew it annually? We can't do a five-year contract?
Oh.
It's a five-year term, but it has a, it has a fiscal approval out clause.
Right, you have 120 days out if you don't like it. The other thing is I can't find anywhere in here how much it costs. So is there another form that has the cost on it?
It's based off of a formulary which our doctor uses. So again, it varies. It's not like time on costs, I don't know what it is per pill, 20 cents per pill or something like that.
If you look at the bid sheet, it'll give you some.
You can get a bid sheet.
There should be, there should be a bid sheet.
All we have is a services agreement, that's all I got. But you guys already looked at it and you're okay with it? Is that, you guys don't? Cause I, you guys don't need to sit here all day. It also talks about them providing a fax machine and...
Yeah, a couple of things I didn't reiterate earlier was, we're actually gonna get a med cart lease to us through going for them. I've been bidding out med carts. They're ranging between $200 and $2,500.
It says here they're gonna provide med carts?
Yeah, so they will provide us with a med cart. We don't have to go out and purchase one like we did in the past. That's a, that's a big expensive cost and trying to figure out where we're gonna pull for that was actually one of the biggest reasons why I went with Diamond opposed to, we had another one out there, Westwood. Cost was comparable, but they're able to provide that service for us. The other thing we had them put in there was, it's kinda like a reimbursement program, so a lot of the times we'll pick up meds and inmate will leave and we're just stuck with this med. Pharmacies typically won't take it back.
Right.
So we got it with them to where if it's an unused medication packet, we can send those back at the end of the month. This will create a credit for us and a lot of jail commanders have said that this is where the cost savings for the medications come from is that reimbursement program. For us, it's huge. We usually just have to destroy those medications and we're just out the money. For any local pharmacy country or company, they won't allow you, once they take it out of that building, they won't allow you to bring it back.
Non-controlled oral solid medication and unopened tamper evident. And not, has not been compounded, does not require refrigeration. Properly stored.
Great, I think we can save some money is what it looks like.
Yeah. Just trying to figure out how much it's gonna cost.
Uh, it's...
It's not called out here.
Yeah, it's hard to give you that estimate.
We could try it for a year and see how it goes and if we don't like it, then we can do something different.
The other thing I'm setting up with Diamond is that they are gonna bill the state directly for the state inmate medications.
Well, that's a good feature.
And so that's been a headache navigating with Savon and the state. So this kinda gives us control of how we're going to pay for our medications, which we're, we've had a, a bit of, you know, it's time consuming for us to scrub through state versus county meds. This allows them to just build the separate entities the way they should. If they're within that formulary that Dr. Wells has submitted, then we don't have to request payment through the state. It's just, it's, it's auto approved. So this really saves us a lot of time on the deputy end.
So are you two willing to go forward with this now or do you need more time?
No, I'm good.
I'm good with it, Mr. Chairman.
So then I would entertain a motion then to approve this services agreement?
I'll make a motion to approve a service agreement with Diamond Pharmacy?
Correct.
I'll second that.
And move to seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Can I make a comment?
Thank you.
Yep.
So, we have in our budget, the $35,000, we've been, we've used that number for several years. Only time we really go over is if we have another medical issue, but the, all of the medical at the hospital or at our facility and the meds had been coming out of that. So that kinda gives you an idea that if it's a little bit more than what we've been paying, it still should fit within that $35,000 that we already have budgeted.
And that doesn't pay the fuel or the deputy's time to go up there either, so, and that's probably as much or more.
Yeah, so just so you, you know that.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification.
We're good? Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move right on down to our agenda. Our next presenter is our wonderful road supervisor, Mr. Jeff McFadden.
Mr. Chairman, can we just get like a two-minute break?
Need a break?
Please.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute break and then we'll be back.
What's the word? It's wrote in stone. What's in there is what I have to do.
Right.
So that guarantees FEMA that to go ahead and release money because I have to do this.
So basically it's just a review of the process that we used to move that.
Yes.
I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion that we approve the extension of the STANTEC agreement.
Second.
And move to second. In all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Jeff, I noticed that Mickey's doing all of your work while you're out plowing. We need to like deputize her in some way so she can sign all your stuff.
She learned how, did she groom? I mean, does she plow?
I've tried to get her in a road crew and she says no way.
She's smart enough to say absolutely not.
Well, I think she looked great in a road crew.
I think she do. Show her pictures. Sometimes they'll take out the front window of the greater truck, which is like, you guys don't get paid enough.
Nope. And good job on my road. Thank you very much.
Sunday was, everybody out, Sunday was, including me, I think I ran off the road six times that day because you could not see where the heck you were going.
Oh my gosh.
And it took me after three hours to do my route, but I just had to slow way down and kind of feel your way down the road.
Well, and it was the kind of snow that you couldn't blow either. It was kinda wet. Plugged up a lot of augers this weekend.
My call didn't do anything until Sunday morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a young lady that's driving and I, I think she's got a lot of guts.
Okay, you wanna move on down to the workshop? Or you got something else?
Got one more. This is that Forest Service agreement.
Oh, okay.
This is through the Boise National for the no-business road.
No change, nothing else?
No, this is, it'll kinda be added to that rack. Hopefully the contractor or, Forest Service already has a contractor that's gonna be around here doing brush work and stuff like that, so Forest Service has to give us the money to pay. It'll be, we pay and then we get reimbursed.
And that was 72,000? 75,000?
75, 75.
74,999 or something.
Yeah, 74, 75,499.
So this is basically a summer project to replace culverts, brushing.
Yep, ditch work.
Doesn't touch any of the stuff we're doing in the winter.
No, no.
How far up does this go?
We don't do nothing. What's that?
How far up does this go? So go all the way to the...
To the county line, which is four, four and a half miles, 4.8 miles, I think, something like that.
Which road?
No Business.
Oh, No Business, okay.
Yeah, and I've got a rack grant to regravel that whole thing.
Okay.
So which will be good if we can get all the culverts and ditch work done before we...
Do it simultaneously.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good. So we need a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion that we approve the road agreement with USDA Forest Service on Boise National Forest.
I'll second that.
Move to second. In all favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yep. Now, do you wanna do the workshop?
Yep, you guys get my email on the new shop pricing.
No, I haven't, Jeff. Haven't had a chance to look at it yet.
Okay, so it's really close to what I kinda told you ballpark figure is gonna be, looking at about $2.5 million for the shop and...
And it's two separate buildings, right?
Yeah, I don't want the office attached to the shop again because we're, that office is full of diesel smoke and anything else.
Are both metal buildings?
Uh, no, the office will be stick framed. And it's 175 a square foot for the shop and 250 a square foot for the office building.
So are we gonna go with RM, what is it, RMT steel?
I left this JGT architect, sure, architects. They did their reaching out. They, I'm pretty sure they talked to R and M and a bunch of other different people. They got, I've never dealt with an architect before, so they've got their feelers out there and...
Where the heck did it go? So what do we do next to get that moving, you guys?
Money.
Well...
Money.
So this is ARPA funding and we need to have that conversation about where we're gonna put our ARPA funding or we move this forward, because I don't think your carryover is gonna do this, so I, I don't think we're ready to move forward quite yet. I mean, there's a lot of conversations to be had on ARPA funding before this happens.
And these guys want some money for design services. It looks like...
Well, that, that's, that's if we move forward.
My question is, you know, Clearwater doesn't have any of their proposals to us yet on, on, you know, what they would be willing to do or anything else. I don't know if we run this by Clearwater and see what they have to offer. And where on the priority list all this is. That's my feedback.
I know that, I know it's a pretty sensitive issue, but it seems to me like at some point, we've pretty much arrived at the conclusion that that's what should happen to the road crew. So I personally don't, I'm not sure that we justify holding up ARC funding for that. I mean, I don't, you know, I think we need to decide if that's a good use for it. I don't know. I know that we're gonna have to have a discussion of how far we, I mean, how it gets used, but I don't know. I just, I just see it as a big issue and I don't, I don't know. I don't wanna kick that football down the road.
I just, I just see it as a big issue and I don't, I don't know. I don't want to kick that football down the road a couple more years, you know?
And I don't think it'll be a couple more years, but I do feel like, you know, in the spring, Clearwater was gonna have a list of priorities for the county and to commit two and a half million this moment in time is a large commitment until, you know, we see what those priorities are and what the funding mechanisms are. Is there a way to do this by putting inside, you know, a million a year or something? But I don't know. I...
My feeling is I think we need to kind of wait and see what else comes in.
Well, I think that...
Right now, there's no big rush. We gotta do this.
I think that two and a half million was, if you read through his, all that other cost stuff, it's probably gonna be, probably gonna be over three.
Yeah.
I think we need to...
If not more.
Just hold for a minute and make sure where our priorities are. This is a moment in time we don't want to waste and we don't want to move too fast and make decisions that may not be in the best of the county.
Lot of money to dedicate.
Without a full conversation, I mean, I'm willing to make that call if that is what comes up, you know, is really high priorities. But how can we do it? I don't know. Need to think it through after seeing that number.
Yeah.
It's not on for even discussion today, is it?
If you take the fifteen thousand square foot, which is just the one building, a two hundred dollars a square foot, that's three million. And that doesn't even take into consideration the other building. So there's a lot to chew on here.
I mean, we've got a small septic system out there for the weed department. That's probably gonna have to be tripled in size. We're gonna have to have some kind of a oil catchment system for drains coming out of the shop. We've got, gotta have, I want to make sure we somehow implement a car wash system for wintertime use. So cops can roll through there. We can run equipment through there and get all this salt.
And on a septic, that is not, I don't even know how we do that.
I mean, it's gotta be built like one of those car washes in the valley. It's got spray nozzles coming from every which direction and...
Those are all on sewer, not on septic.
They're on, actually those big car washes in the valley, they are one hundred percent recycled water.
Right.
Yeah, they don't let them put any of that stuff in their sewer system.
And then there's also, I know, you know, you build a shop, you gotta have lighting and benches and you're gonna need somebody to lift, you know, trucks. You know, there's a lot more costs that's gonna go into this. We're not even, even discussing that.
That's, that's why I just had him kind of get that kind of number, just to kind of put in everybody's heads on kind of what our starting point's gonna be.
I mean, I appreciate that. And there's, there's no big rush right now to have to do this. They're not asking for a commitment, so.
I thought maybe a shop was gonna blow up when the propane tank got ruptured at Legion Hall yesterday, but...
Wow.
I mean, that happened, Jeff. What's wrong? Oh, never mind.
One of the only days I really, really needed fuel before I headed back to Clear Creek and they wouldn't let me go, so.
Okay, let's go into the workshop.
Okay.
Guys want to come up? Mickey, come on up, sit at the table. Who's up? Brian, we'll let you run the show here on this one. Should we all just be down there or is it necessary to be up here? We may be...
People can actually hear us better when we're on our microphones.
Okay, all right. What about them? They need a mic as well, probably.
Talk loud. Well, I can take mine now.
No, I'll take mine now.
They're all over. Christmas ornaments are around it.
Because I think it's important.
We can hook it around your car.
Yeah, there's lots of work.
Enough. You want to share with me?
No, I'm okay.
So the request for the discussion did come from me. It's not really a legal issue as much as I just coordinated on behalf of the departments who were getting a number of questions about the winter, winter road maintenance policy. And so I thought I'd just, just coordinate the discussion. I had circulated two documents to you in advance. One is a memo with some proposed talking points. The talking points, if you like them, can either be internal documents that can be provided. I know the clerk's office is getting calls primarily when somebody calls the road department and doesn't get the answer that they want to hear. They're calling the road department. So if we are speaking with consistency and, and the same message is repeated, I think that's going to be helpful. A couple of issues that I think if we can accomplish in this discussion would be, would be helpful for me in providing legal advice when these issues come up as well as help Mickey and Jeff send, send the message. I think just as, just as a practical matter, the, the map that's on the website that shows where the snowplow routes are is a really, really valuable tool, but I'm concerned that people don't know how to get to it. There's like three or four clicks to get to, to get to it and it took, it took me some time to get that figured out. Once I got it figured out how to navigate it, wow, this is, this is really actually helpful. So I thought I would bring that up and see if there is some way that we can, we can make it a little easier to access on the website, make it more prominent on the homepage. Click here to get to those snowplow routes or however you want to do that. Working with, with IT to, to manage that part, I think that would help. If, if you were okay with the talking points, I wondered if it would be useful to put that on the website as well. I, you know, I just took a crack at it. I don't know if it's, if it's the message that you want or if it's thorough, as thorough as it needs to be. I really just intended for that to be a starting, a starting place for the conversation. I think where my role comes in on this really comes down to, we launched this thing this year. We have reviewed the ordinances, basically built this policy based on what your existing ordinance requires, which if you were going to be doing any kind of work in the right of way, including snow removal, you have to come to talk to Jeff and get a, get a permit. That, as you would expect, is gonna generate some calls, some, some enforcement related issues. And I would like some clarification on what your expectations are for people who are plowing without a permit this year and for those who are saying, I don't want to plow and I want you to plow. I think that's not a legal issue. That's a policy issue that, that we need to get on, we need to get on the right page with. The, the legal issue as it relates to a permit is if you deny an application for a permit or if you revoke a permit, that's an appealable decision. So we need to have a process in place, maybe even a process that we codify in an ordinance that says, here is the steps that you take to have that decision reviewed. So question number one is who makes the decision? Does the road department make the decision or does the board of county commissioners make the decision? That's important legally because if the road department denies permit, which I think you have the authority to delegate that to Jeff, then their right to appeal is in front of this, in front of this body. And if that's how you would like for that process to happen, we can, we can put on the application itself. The denial of the permit can be requested. If it's a planning and zoning issue, it's, you can appeal within ten days.
And Brian, because we, we kind of took it away from the road supervisor years ago so that he didn't have to...
Right.
Deal with it. They had to come directly. And so we took the hit from the people that...
Right. And if you want to keep that procedure, we just need to know so we can...
Appeal artists.
Well, it, once the decision is final and the board of the county commissioners is the final decision, then the appeal goes up to district court.
Seems to me like, you know, maybe you can kind of educate me a little bit on this. But just what I'm hearing, it sounds like initially anything like that should go to that department. And I'm there and then too, as you've explained, Brian, then if it's appeal that comes here, which us in the seat of addressing appeal, but if we go the other route and we get appealed on it, if it's directly from us, then it actually has to go out of, out of the county to the district court. Seemingly like to simplify the thing would be to go back into that and allow that under our directions, of course, for him to, you know...
Right. And that, you know, and that I think is one of the, one of the main goals or objectives that I wanted to accomplish in this, in this workshop is get some clear direction. So Mickey and Jeff know...
Right.
Whether they're, and I created this application for that purpose. But, you know, if there's an application that, first of all, everybody should fill out an application to get a permit. And if there's some concerns or some questions, then Jeff or Mickey can send it to me for review. And if their inclination is to decline the application for the permit, then we need to make sure that they have the opportunity to come back in front of this board for, for appeal purposes. And if you, if you don't want that process, if you want really the process to be pushed to the board so we take that burden off of the road department, then that's fine too. I just need to know so we can, we can modify those procedures.
That's why we did it years past so that the road supervisor didn't have to take, make that, make that call. Jeff, I guess I'll ask you again, do you want that response?
I mean, I'd be the start of it.
That certainly fill out the permits and...
Yeah.
Make sure all that stuff is done.
There was that one and then if somebody's...
Actually saying, yeah, we're gonna plow your road or, because what you get into is, well, I plowed this guy's road, but I didn't plow this guy's road. And then you get, people really cross stuff over there.
That's starting right now.
I think, right now. Yeah, and I think this is, the system that you're looking at right now wasn't in existence, if I'm correct. Thinking about this, right? We, you didn't have that at that time, did you? We've had this one for, just doing, I don't know. Permit process? Court was on the board and we voted to say we're not taking on any more roads at this time.
Permit process.
From, from my understanding, no. There has never been a requirement to obtain a permit for plows.
Yeah.
So those have been a little less formal than that permit process.
So then, for instance, if you get, if you were to get permits, you know all the rules and regulations.
Right.
And you looked at permission, I think it falls in there? Yes, no, whatever. Well, I, I think what's happening is we're talking about two separate things. What I'm talking about is people coming to ask the county to plow their county road. That should be our function. People come and say they want to plow the county road.
Yeah.
Okay, here's a permit. Jeff gets it filled out, make sure everything is hunky dory and then you can say, okay, you do that. We don't make that decision.
Right.
Now, for example, last week we had the guy, Little Donner. He sent me an email. He talked to the state and he talked to IDD and they have no concerns. And so he needs to get back with you with something in paper form, I think, so that it protects our liability. And then you could say, yep, you could go ahead and plow your road down to, from this point to this point.
Did he talk to IBL at all?
Yes, he talked to Scott. But I have the email, I think I still have it, but nothing in paper form.
Need, need something in writing.
So he would need to go back to them and get something in writing. Says, yeah, we don't have a concern. Brian doesn't have a concern at ITD, let him plow the road. You would sign off on the permit and let him go to work.
And he'd have all the insurances in place and everything is a requirement of that permit.
Right. And that's gonna be the challenge is that insurance thing. Because that's a separate policy and it's gonna be six, seven, eight hundred bucks to buy that policy.
And I think our current permit states it has to be a professional plow driver to be in our right of way.
Have to have a contractor's license.
And so your, where does that say that? It's in that?
I don't, I don't think that's gonna work.
Oh, it doesn't?
No. No, it only says you are required to have insurance. Whether you can obtain the insurance without a contractor's license, that's up to the insurance company.
Buy a secondary general liability million dollar policy for, mine cost me about six, six hundred and thirty bucks a year. So that if they back out on the highway and somebody creams them, that insurance is gonna kick in, not ours.
Right.
And I, so we're two different things here. If we're gonna plow roads or if they're gonna, we're gonna let them plow the road, two different issues.
Absolutely right. So if we could, if we could talk about the first issue, which is, is the county going to come and plow the county road that I now have an occupancy permit for? The purpose of the, the purpose of the talking points and putting the, putting some sort of a, a link on the website that could get people to the talking points and to the map that shows where the snowplow maps are and how we're gonna distribute this message is really aimed at helping the clerk's office deal with calls that they get. Help Jeff and Mickey deal with the calls that they get and the calls that you're all gonna get are answered consistently and in the same way. If, if you can look at this message and if you, if you're okay with it and want to put it on the website, that's great. I think one of the things that needs to be resolved is the road advisory committee has recommended that we don't take on any more roads. That, that is a broad, general decision that can be interpreted...
It's a recommendation only.
And it's a recommendation only. So you're gonna, so you're gonna have these like Barker Lane from last year and I'm gonna forget the name of the...
Springfield?
This year.
White Cloud.
Springfield Court.
Up in White Cloud.
White Cloud.
Where you have a small little spur road that's in a subdivision that's being plowed. Do you want to consider those on a case by case basis or do you want to just say, we're cutting it off? We're implementing the recommendation of the advisory committee that we're not taking on any new roads.
Well, and if I remember right, the one in White Cloud, she came back in with a plat that stated on there as soon as they start their house, the county would build, filed their road.
Didn't say anything about snow removal. It said maintenance.
It's a county road.
Didn't say nothing about snow removal.
No.
No problems.
I'm gonna have to look at that again, too.
So all of the, all of the plat approvals that are coming through planning and zoning say that the board of county commissioners reserves the right to determine the level of maintenance that will be provided to the county roads that are being accepted.
All of the new plats.
And, and I don't know when that started. I don't know when that...
I don't believe that that started that long ago. That's all their plats. And the reason there was questions on the White Cloud one was it doesn't state that. It just, it was very, it's a gray area and a gray statement on that plat. And we're gonna have a few of those.
I don't think that's, I don't, I'll be honest, I don't know if that's actually true. Because if you get back and get, get clear on what we maintain, we set the standards. And I think that's our, that's our ordinance. We set standard. We accept maintenance, but we set standards. You know, and as far as that, you know, and this is gonna come back. We might as well talk about it. I mean, you, we, Gaia, you, we, the county commissioners, adopted that recommendation by the road, or the road advisory committee to not take on any more new roads for winter maintenance. I mean, it's clear, it's in the record. Now, we did take that one.
Did we have anything that's enforceable?
But you adopted that as a resolution.
It's a recommendation and, I mean, that's...
Now, that, that was a recommendation from them, not a recommendation from the county commissioners.
I think our question's going forward is who's gonna make this decision? I mean, I, I honestly would think that Jeff would have first blush with this. Everything we make a decision on, you're going to inform anyway. And so when it comes to us about whether you want to adopt a road, we're gonna ask, you know, are you plowing next to it? You know, how long is it gonna take? You know, how long is it gonna take? You're going to inform that decision on whether that's possible or not. I have no problem with allowing Jeff to do that and making a decision. I think that it becomes more politically charged for you, or, you know, it, it's harder to say no, but I think right now, the recommendation is no, we're not taking any more county roads. I think those one-off conversations are when they can come back and appeal your decision to us. But for the most part, you know, do they really need to come to a meeting and have us tell them no? Because that's what the recommendation's gonna be. Very small, you know, one-off situations may occur, and that should be where you get an appeal. Not every decision.
And where it caused us is in the overtime. That route driver's probably gonna have to go another half an hour, so it's gonna be twelve-hour shift, eleven-hour shift, whatever that shift ends up being because he took on those roads.
And that's what Jeff's recommendation is always gonna be to us, you know, one way or another, is, it's his decision anyway, it's his information to us.
I think.
I, you know, where does that decision made? I'm, I'm happy to say it starts with Jeff. He makes the decision, and then if somebody doesn't agree with it, they come back and appeal it to him.
And I, I think that gets us back to the two issues. One of them is, it, how do we feel about this Valley County Road and Bridge Department application permit to perform work? And I think we resolve that one, that's pretty easy, in my opinion. Starts with Jeff.
Okay.
I mean, I.
We're already implementing that one.
And I think, and I think this is an opportunity for, for Doug to weigh in, because when those calls come into the road department, and the decision is made that we're not gonna take on any new roads, or we're not gonna take on this new road, then the, it seems like the inclination of that person or people is to then call the clerk's office, and, and we need to give some guidance to the clerk's office on how to handle, how, preferably, get a procedure in place that, that the road department can communicate to this person that the clerk's office isn't your, isn't your appellate body, this is the process that you need to go. But I still think that that's, you know, the clerk is a very visible elected office in the county, so that's the, that's who they call. So we need to arm, arm Doug with some information to, to handle those situations.
So you usually send them to the road department, right?
Depen, what I usually do, I'm, I'm asking them, have they spoken with the road director to determine if the road director is declining their request to maintain the road? And then if a winter maintenance agreement has been established with that individual. If they are denying, or if they are appealing the decision to provide winter maintenance, then we would get that on the agenda, right? To present that to the commissioners. But we typically don't know what the decision is, uh, until.
The road advisory committee said we shouldn't take on any more roads. So I say to them, you can go before the county commissioners to appeal this.
See, he doesn't know that you guys have turned down this person's request.
Well, I guess.
That's the only time that they ever called you, though, saying, I wanna get on the agenda.
They, they call us first.
They call us first.
And we tell them the same exact thing every time, we're not taking on any more roads at this time, and if you would prefer to.
If you want to appeal that.
If you wanted to appeal our decision, then you need to get in front of the commissioners.
Which is why the calls go to you.
Are you giving them that opportunity to enter into a winter maintenance agreement, though?
No, they want us to plow.
Nobody wants to plow the road, they want us to.
Is that opportunity to enter into a winter maintenance agreement offered to them?
You'd hire a private guy to come in and plow.
I think that's what you're here for, right?
I can stop.
Well, we're, we're trying to determine if that's the process that the commissioners wanna have.
That's what we need to do.
Most everybody that I talk to just want us.
So we would just put them on the commissioner agenda for an appeal?
And that's why I refer them to you, to your office.
They come to us, and we can say, we're not taking on any more roads, but you can hire X Y Z construction company, and they'll comply your road.
We can start that conversation with us.
But I think to have this form of permit.
Which we have, we're using that already.
Yeah. I think, I think Doug's point is a good one, though, is that if they're not, if there isn't a conversation at the road department level, that you have another option besides the county just denying your permit, they may not even be aware of that option.
Or if you hire a contractor, here is our permitting process.
Here is the process for hiring a contractor, you have that option. It, it may, if we make some modifications in the way that we communicate with these original calls that are coming into the road department, minimize these additional calls to the clerk's office, uh, and complaints that way. So, I, I mean, I'll leave that up to the road department to figure out how they can dovetail, how they can dovetail into, uh, into the conversation, the opportunity to fill out an application for a permit. I know, it, I mean, if their original expectation was that it's county road, it's gonna get plowed, this is gonna cost them money because they gotta hire a contractor, that, that's not gonna be their first choice. But if, if we can communicate to them that we don't have, we don't have the resources or the manpower to plow every mile of county road in the county, so we have to make prioritized decisions, maybe they'll realize that.
That's a really good point, because I talked to a guy a year or two back about, county's not doing that. He said, well, what do I do? I said, well, hire a private contractor. I didn't know I could do that.
Yeah.
What about if we did a marketing push? We get together with Mackenzie and put something in the Star News and do something, yeah, on the website.
Real estate should be, that should be on the website. They know they can hire somebody else to plow it.
Yeah.
With this permit.
How do they get a permit?
And that's why, well, and that's, that's why I started these talking points, with talking point number one was going to the website that we've already got the data collected for that says, here's how many miles of road, the roads that we maintain in the county, and here's how many miles we can, we can physically plow in the wintertime. And, and all the data's there, and all the maps there, if we can promote that and educate the community, the real estate agents, the landowners, the, uh, full-time residents that are here, where you can go on the county website and make it fairly easy. I, I, I'd heard that it was there, I'd played around with the website several times, and never really found where it was until the third or fourth time. And so if we can elevate that or make that a little bit more user-friendly to access that, you know, during the winter months, or maybe twelve months out of the year, it needs to be.
Mackenzie is putting the link on the Facebook posts.
Well, and not, she needs to put it in the newsletter also, we send out a monthly newsletter, I mean, it can go out in the newsletter, we can do it on Facebook.
We can put it in the Star News, too.
And, yeah, put it as one of our top five priorities for the next, the next Star News, I mean, that should be coming out pretty quickly.
So who will take in charge of making sure that it's a little higher up in the website?
I have to go through Tamara.
We can't change stuff on our website.
I haven't figured out how to change stuff on our website.
She gave, she gave us instructions, but unless you're an I T major, you don't understand it.
I will have Mackenzie, I'll have Mackenzie reach out to you and work with you on that because Mackenzie can do that, and should be the one doing that when we're doing a ad campaign.
Yeah. So can you, make, make a, just to try to recap a little bit here, so, I just, I just say here, okay, so we've got a process. Process, if someone wants to request new snow plow, no, nobody's gonna come if they already got it. So anytime, anytime that somebody comes in to request, number one, first step, come to the road department. Road department reviews it, their request, and then makes a decision, number two, on whether we, based on our policy, can plow that road or not plow that road. Okay, that's, and that, all these things we've discussed. So then, the next part of that is if they, it's necessary, the next step is to inform them of the, of the permit, the, uh, this permit.
Construction, application.
Right. And you can, you can do this on your own, this is a permit process. Then, if all that fails, the next step is gonna be probably appeal to the board of county commissioners.
Right.
Does that make, I mean, it, trying to get a process and we.
Right, if that, so if that's the process that you want to develop, then you take the Little Donner, uh, request as an example. What would have, what would have been on the agenda is the appeal. What you would have had in front of you is a packet of information, the application, what the reason is for the denial.
Right.
And, and the information that you have in advance of a person from the community coming to this meeting on Monday, and, and you all getting kinda caught, caught flat-footed with that. And instead of having to take on this issue for the very first time, not even knowing what to expect, you should have a packet that outlines where the road is, what the reasons behind the, the denial was, and what the issues are for consideration.
Right. Brian, these two links you sent to us, we could put those on the website, do you?
I'm hoping, I'm hoping, well, first of all, we need to create a link for the application itself, because I don't think that's available yet on the, on the website. But I, I think that should be simple for I T to do, and then we can put that application, this application, on the website so people can download it, fill it out, send it in to, uh, to Mickey and, and make that process simple. I do wanna revisit the decision-making process. If, if we're going to, if, if we're going to, um, basically implement the, well, I guess, I, I need some clarification on what you wanna do with the road advisories recommendation, we don't take on any, any, any more additional road miles. Is that carte blanche denial of that?
We're not taking any more on, it's not just their advisory, I mean, that's the decision that's been made here, we're not taking on any more roads. I mean, it has to be something that's a very small, one-off appeal. Um, I mean, Jeff needs to be denying anything at this moment in time. We're, we're just not taking any more roads. And if there is anything that they can show, where they had some kind of a prior, you know, approval or whatever, then that needs to come back to us on appeal.
So, just, just so the three of us that are sitting at the table are clear on this, it's gonna basically be an automatic denial unless the three of you taking on an appeal will reconsider that based on what.
Evidence they give us.
What evidence they can provide.
So that's when they would be set before the commissioners or on a commissioner's agenda to present their appeals to the commissioners.
Yep.
Even if they have arranged for a winter maintenance agreement between Valley County and the road department, but they still want to appeal the decision to provide county-provided winter maintenance.
Yeah. If they, if they want to bring the, the issue of county-provided winter maintenance on a county road, it really needs to be in front of the board to ultimately make that decision. I like it. And, and I guess in the interim, they can get an application for a permit with a contractor and, and figure that part of it out. So lastly, um, I put on, on here, permit issuance oversight and reporting. This really, from, from my standpoint, is the administrative side of what I would consider a new program. I think we should be tracking how many permits we are, we are granting, we need to have a process for overseeing that process, or, and then reporting back to this board, uh, the, what went well, what needs to change, what can, what can be improved. I, I do that with some reservation that I know that the road department is, is up to its ears, but I think that needs to be considered in any program that you are running for accountability purposes, both accountability of the department to the board, but to the public, that we are, we are tracking it and we are overseeing it to make sure that it's running smoothly.
And that's basically what we're talking about, is oversight and transparency.
Right.
And, and records.
Yep. The, the process or the procedures really have not been discussed at all, this is the first, I think, that, that, that I brought it up, maybe, maybe Jeff and Mickey have talked about that internally, I don't know. But if, if we're going to have, have this program succeed into the future, we're going to have to be able to track, uh, track the data and, and account for it.
So your new software employee, remind me of her name.
Audrey.
Audrey. I, I continue to try and put it in my brain, but, uh, does she have time to do this type of a system? I mean, to me, that would make sense.
I mean, right now, the ones we do have, they, they sign them, Mickey puts them together, scans them in and puts them in the computer.
Yeah. Well, that's, that part of, that record thing is already kinda, you have a, you have a.
We keep track of everything down there.
Everything scanned.
Just a matter of.
It's just putting it on Excel spreadsheet, so it's easy for, when Jeff comes in for one of his presentations to say, we issued five new permits, we now have fifty permits.
I guess records is number five.
Should we, should we number them like we do our approach permits?
Probably, I mean, you're gonna have to redo these every winter.
No.
I mean, so that's, you gotta have some process in place where you're looking at these, it's gotta be some kind of a spreadsheet.
But the thing is, it's not up to us to notify the contractor, say, hey, your permit's due here in two weeks. It's up to them to contact us.
Agreed, but what are you gonna do when you're out on a road, and you see it's plowed and you, you don't have something to file? Can't keep it in your brain.
It's in my head.
Gotta be on, and so there, the process, and I don't know, maybe that software will actually bring up contracts.
Yeah, the enforcement side is something I.
Well, that's okay, I mean, that's, that's a letter out to them, you're plowing in a county right of way with, with no, you know.
It happens all the time.
So.
Because we don't have a process in place right now, you know, we don't have any.
The, the code enforcement, uh, since we're on that topic, the code enforcement process needs to be, we need to be very clear, because there's going to be, you know, there, what, what's really frustrating and probably darn near impossible to actually take legal action on is four or five different emails or telephone calls. We really need to have a procedure in place. And, and until you have a code enforcement officer that can do, that's been trained to do inspections on what the code requires, what, where's, we've gotta work through the sheriff. And so if there's a potential violation, we need to bring the sheriff to the table and say, we're gonna be calling upon you when there's a complaint related to operating on a county right of way without a permit, to go interview the people involved, take pictures, uh, send in a report, and submit it to the road department and my office so we can proceed with the civil action. If I'm getting emails and pictures from twenty-five different people, and I don't know who's talking to who and, and who's doing what, then we get stuck in the mud.
I think it's important to understand that if we get somebody plowing a county road, that's okay. That's really what we want, because we can't afford to do it. So I wouldn't come out and start playing hardball with these people. I would say, thank you for plowing our county road, we have a permit process, could you come in and fill out the permit?
Agreed.
And we don't wanna discourage people from doing this.
No.
We're asking subdivisions and homeowners to do it all over the county now.
Right.
And then you get a, you get a permit from all those homeowners every year to plow those? You see, so I think we're building a program here that maybe is a little bit bigger than our pants.
That's a really good point.
It's, it's, it's big.
It is.
It is, it's a lot bigger than anybody, and that's great if you wanna go plow your road. However, if you come in with a D six cab and tear up the pavement, we're gonna come down hard on you.
Well, it's, this goes on, this, this goes farther than this winter, I know that's what our subject is, but I brought one up to Jeff, actually, this year in our, our subdivision, where, in my opinion, road is being torn up by construction. You know, people get all, you know, they use the county roads heavily in the summer, and these construction projects, they drive in with a big, uh, tracked piece of equipment to work there, well, guess where it gets unloaded?
Right on the road.
Right on your road, and it tears the edge of the roads up every time. And it's the same kinda thing here with this winter thing, yeah, it's fine to have them plowed in the winter, it's great, let's welcome that, but just don't welcome destruction.
Right.
But, and that's what this permit thing, how it's, really work out to be a good thing.
Maybe more of the question from Jeff's side is, what kind of a piece of equipment are you gonna use to plow this road? Because if you're running a, a little skid steer with a blower in the front, you know, that's probably not a big issue, but if you're gonna go out there with a D six cab, plow that road every day, we're gonna have some damage to our road.
All those things should be in that permit process, and that's, you're right, you're the proper level for that, in my opinion.
We have everybody but a farmer's gonna do it with the right equipment.
Right. Right. Everybody but a farmer.
Well, the, you know, this is, uh, th- this is a change in the way that we do things. I understand that there will be, one, there'll be resistance to change, and two, it will be, it will be a process and a time-consuming process to adopt new procedures. So I, I've said it many times, and I, and, and I, I really do embody this philosophy, and it is educate first, regulate second, or last. And so you really do, especially when we're talking about a situation like this where we have fewer, uh, fewer pieces of equipment and fewer people to actually plow all the roads the county has, we do rely on private contractors and citizens to help bridge the gap for that. And so that isn't necessarily a reason to target them with hard, heavy-handed regulatory action. So there is got to be a softer approach and an education process. But there is going to be somebody who has been told, been told, and been told, and then refuses and damages the road, or injures a person, or causes property damage, and they shouldn't have been there in the first place, that my phone should probably ring in a situation like that, and, and I want to make sure that we're on the same page when that, when that does happen.
Honestly, open, we started the permits years ago, it was with utilities companies wanting to come in and slice across our brand-new paved roads to put in something. No, man, you can't do that kind of stuff anymore. It was never really intended for somebody wanting to plow, plow their little county road to their house.
I do get...
Or even grade it in the summer.
I get that. Interestingly enough, though, the ordinance actually called out snow plowing in, which it, which I was surprised to see that, but it, it did. So there, there was some, there, there was some thought or some intention that there would be a, a permit process. And if this policy doesn't work, it can always be revisited, and we can review how, you know, what changes need to be made and what amendments to the ordinance you'd like to see to, to make this work a little better.
So what kind of backup do we get if, if we get an offender that goes, 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 doesn't tear nothing up, he still refuses to get a permit?
And...
It's not up to me to go knock him on the back of the head, and to take sheriff's office or...
Well...
Somebody with a little more authority than me.
No, that's not, that, let's, let's talk about that just for a second. If you go back and you review your penalty section in the ordinance, there, you have two options. One is a misdemeanor violation. Unlikely that, that that's going to be the path. There is a civil, there is a civil penalty for operating within the county right-of-way without a permit. So if that's the case, the sheriff's office would do the inspection or the investigation. If we find that there was enough evidence to support that there was a violation and there's justification to issue a civil penalty, Jeff, that's you and I working together with the person...
Right.
To collect that civil penalty if that's, if that's the path that, that we take. So, so you will be intimately involved in the process from the beginning, from the issuance of the permit, all the way through to the code enforcement process. The sheriff may be the inspector or the investigator, but there's another step after that that would involve you.
Do you charge a fee for the permit?
Not for this one.
I think that's a great idea, because you can tell people, hey, it's no car, charge, just come in and get the permit. All I want to know is that you're not out there with a piece of equipment that's going to destroy our road.
I think what the problem's going to be is the insurance policy. These guys, you know, do they all have insurance?
Yeah.
And that's probably where the hindrance is going to be, but...
And, and there's some people that kind of bristled with the indemnification, too. They wanted, they wanted the county to indemnify them, not, not the other way around, so...
I will tell you that the city of McCall, if you are working in their right-of-way, you got to do a bond. You can't even put in a culvert without a bond.
That's...
And that's, you know, so I mean, we're, we're nowhere near the, yeah, it costs $8,000.
At McCall.
Yeah, it's, it's very expensive to even put a culvert in their right-of-way. So if you think about it, and I don't know what kind of documentation Jeff and Mickey are going to need, but I mean, on a spreadsheet, if they say permit issued or conversation had, you know, and check on this...
It's on the application.
But what I'm trying to get to is if they won't do an application with you? What documentation do you have prior to that? So Jeff sees that somebody's doing it, somewhere in that documentation folder needs to be, Jeff spoke with Joe Blow on this day. And then the second, Joe Blow did not get his app, but we spoke with him again. So on the third time, there's going to be a letter that comes out that says, we've spoken to you twice, you haven't applied. These could be the penalties. And so they give some kind of a documentation trail?
Mm-hmm.
If it's just on a spreadsheet that says Jeff spoke on this date and they date the date, does there have to be anything more than that?
I think that's a lot of extra work you could put on your post.
It is, but I mean, that's...
I'm looking at this from a different angle. If it's a gravel road, even if they tear up the road, it's still easier to fix that. Where I would be concerned is on a paved road.
But can you treat them differently?
That was my point on this insurance.
It's more money to fix a paved road than it does a gravel road.
So in the insurance requirement, maybe some consideration should be, what is the potential damage? Rather than just a million-dollar bond.
I've talked to Brian about that. A million, a million dollars will cover, cover it pretty easily unless it's...
Yeah, I mean, I can't imagine somebody suing us because they got in a wreck plowing a county road. Why would they sue the county?
Like, well, Brian explained it to me, and it, I totally understand.
Well...
Maybe he needs to explain it to you.
It's the insurance company that's going to make the decision.
Well, yes, yes, but you, you have potential liability because ultimately, the decision to allow for the plowing has to be done with the process in place and to ensure that the person that you are allowing to do the work on the county road is capable of doing the work, that they have the right equipment, that they have the appropriate training. If we're negligent in our approval, letting any, any person that, that, you know, really has no business being on a, a large piece of equipment and goes out and injured, injures another person or kills them, you know, you're not going to, you're not going to exceed the $1 million liability limit when it comes to damage to a road. That's probably going to be in the thousands, thousands of dollars. It's the more catastrophic personal injury and property injury issues, which can happen.
Kind of like the idiot that comes onto our property in the middle of the night and hurts himself tripping, and then sues us for being on our property when they shouldn't be, and they win.
And can be, but that's, that's why we're putting this process in place. We're putting this process in place to ensure that we are reviewing the applications thoroughly. We're making sure that they've got the, the right, the right capabilities to do the work, and if they do, then our, then we're reducing, we're reducing our risk.
Well, there's, the other thing to think about, too, is like the guy that was in last week, a Little Donner student with a pickup and a blade, sooner or later, that's not going to work. So he's going to have to hire somebody with a big machine to come in there and clean it all up.
That's, and I think that's a good example. I mean, I think that's a pending issue, so we still need to, I mean, we need to be careful about that. But you can visualize, just based on the discussion you had last week about all the potential challenges that certain roads are going to present for, for snow plowing that is beyond just removing the snow from the road, but the potential for, for others, uh, others, other property and other people to be, uh, to be damaged as, as a result of...
And we're not, we're not shrinking on road numbers. I mean, it just continues to grow every single year, so we've got to have a forward-thinking plan in place and not...
And, and to that end, to that end, the permit process that I have recommended to the road department and this board is done with the understanding and the acknowledgement that we're not, we're not completely saving the road department from a lot of labor and a lot of work involved with maintenance of county roads. We're shifting it a little bit, maybe, maybe fewer snowplows out there on the road with the county, with a Valley County emblem on the side, more private contractors doing this. But as you can see, that still is generating a lot of work that has to be done. And so as you look down the road for what the needs of that department are, and I'm kind of saying this, you know, kind of angling towards Jeff and Mickey, that you take that into consideration, what your, what your workload's going to be, which is another reason why it's critically important that we have a reporting, a reporting component to this. So they can come back to you when it's budget time and say, we issued this many permits, this is how many labor hours it took for us to manage that permit process, and we need this much money.
And the other side of that, too, Brian, is the fact that they're going to start tracking how many miles of road are plowed by private industry so that we ever get to a point where we decide we need a levy. And we've got, what amounts, 15 miles of road out here that's privately plowed, that we'll take that on.
Yep.
It's going to help us build that levy value, how much we're going, more we're going to need and help sell it.
That's a great thought.
Can, can I make a suggestion, then, that we put together this process in a well, in a format or something, the whole process, including the permit, as an action item to approve? And so that we, it's not just, we just walk out of here with some understanding we're going to do stuff, can we at least...
Sure.
Codify that so that we don't get questions that come back to us, well, you had this at this time, and how you're doing this, and you're, you know...
I think that's a great idea, and we've kind of done it, but we haven't done it very professional.
Yeah.
This was, just a workshop for discussion purposes, another, so the follow-up would be an action item with, uh, maybe an itemized procedure.
Well-defined process.
Maybe an ordinance amendment?
If, if there's, if there's, I'm going to take a look at the ordinance and see if we need to put the right to appeal if there isn't something in your general administrative section that covers that or this, but, yeah.
Everything's got to be appealed. Okay, let's do that. I'm sure you're legit, but...
Okay.
You back to talk about it.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
The other thing is...
So you're going to go off for lunch, and we'll see everybody back here at 1:00.
We want to do the two action items.
We can do when we come back. Here, we'll have time.
We got a busy afternoon.